Mics. Good evening, welcome to the General Township Zoning Commission. Today is February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven P M in the Township Hall. Agenda items this evening zoning case two thousand and twenty-three dash zero five Romanelli G W L L C first meeting. Zoning resolution, potential amendments. Staff present this evening Joe Schaefer Director of Development and Zoning and Paul Benson Deputy zoning director inspector. Mr. Schaefer roll please.
Roll call Mr. Bernert. Mr. Carter.
Here.
Mr. Left.
Here.
Ms. Walsh.
Mr. Welch.
Mr. Sears. Mr. Wester.
President and accountant for.
President and accountant for.
Statement of policy, this meeting may be recorded, such recordings are public record. May be posted online and could be subject to review in court as is the adopted policy of the zoning commission. All applicants will be granted an opportunity to make their formal presentation. The audience may be then granted an opportunity to comment followed by the applicant's response and questions from the commission. The chairperson may limit repetitive debate reserves the right following rights. To limit comment to items on the agenda, to limit public comment to five minutes per person, to restrict the number of times a member of the public is permitted to speak. And to enact any other reasonable ad hoc protocols or measures necessary to maintain a fair, safe and orderly meeting. This policy was adopted by the commission to provide for the respectful constructive and efficient discussion of business scheduled for consideration and to allow for property processes required by law. First item up is our meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the minutes from the January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting as presented.
I second the motion.
The session comments. Roll.
Roll call Mr. Bernert. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh. Mr. Welch. Mr. Left.
Yes.
The meetings are adopted.
Notes. Time is now seven oh two P M. Romanelli G W L L C requesting approval of a final development plan to construct an eleven thousand, seven hundred square foot office building. And a five thousand, three hundred twenty-seven square foot daycare building on two point two seven six acres. Located along North Gateway on an unaddressed lot immediately northeast of seven one zero seven North Gateway. PIN number three one seven, three four two, zero one zero, one zero zero one seven, Westerville, Ohio, four three zero eight two. Currently zone planned industrial district, P I D, also known as North Gate Office zoning case number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero five. Do we need to finish doing that or are we are we moving straight to the?
I think you can go straight to the motion.
Okay. Per the recommendation and requests, a continuance motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to continue the public hearing for the subject final development plan. Application known as North Gate Office Zoning Commission case number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero five until, my apologies, please stand by. March eleventh at seven P M in the Genoa Township Hall. Additional revised materials will be due to the Genoa Township Development and Zoning Department by February twenty-sixth.
The twentieth is what we have on the schedule.
I apologize, the twentieth at four P M.
I second the motion.
Comments, questions, roll.
Roll call Mr. Bernert.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Left.
Yes, motion passes, time is now seven oh three, that's closed case. Next item up is our zoning amendment. We had some responsibilities. Joe, any comments or questions before?
No, I think you heard enough from me at the last meeting. I, uh, I haven't changed anything with the version you're looking at. I have made some notes since I initially passed this out to you, but to not complicate things for now, we're just gonna roll with that version I sent back out. That's dated the fourth that you had everyone review, so I'm really here just to take notes, answer questions, hear the discussion.
Okay. Does anybody have anything before we get to Article One?
I have a general question. Would it be possible that like after the changes we made this week, make this week? That next meeting, we just look over the changes, like I don't know if you can do that that fast, but. Otherwise, we're gonna keep moving this further and further backwards and then we might not know anymore what we wanted it to be changed at.
So my initial thought was that we would go through this step by step, the way we're.
Yeah.
Looking at five chapters and then plus whatever, I think we thought maybe break it down into three areas, right?
Yeah.
And then we've got to initiate and from that point, then there's some final modification that can be done, we would have the clean copy at that point.
But when when is when when does Joe want to make the changes like to the documents?
Uh, really, I guess however the however you want me to roll them out, I was. I was probably planning on doing them as we went along anyway, I probably wasn't gonna just sit and wait and do them and let them all back up. So if you want them, if you're saying, you know, whatever we get through tonight, you wanna see before the next meeting, as long as it's too voluminous. I don't think that would be an issue for me.
I mean, we can do it in a green color or something, maybe just to highlight.
Yeah, I may just even do highlights, since this is just like a working draft. Um, and not like the public draft, I mean, I know it's public document technically, but it's not the initiated draft, I guess is what I'm trying to say. We can mark it up however we need to, knowing that when we're to the point where we're ready to initiate, I can do a cleaned up version of the red line copy and get rid of any notes that we made along the way.
Yes, as long as it's as long as track changes is still on and we're not losing anything that was originally there.
And I always have the PDF versions that I can always refer to back as what it did say as opposed to, you know, whatever the Word document currently says. So there's a, we always have that comparison tool too.
I mean, it just might be difficult, otherwise in four months, we'd have to look back on these changes we made on the first five chapters and you might kind of forgot what it all was about. Might be easier if you just can do a quick look through the documents.
We can even try to keep a lit, you know, I'll, for me to remember, I'm gonna have to write notes anyways, so I could probably go through and at least bullet point out. These are all the things you wanted me to do, at least generally speaking, and then maybe might jog the memories a little bit.
If you can do track changes in another color, that way we've got the red, then we've got a different color, that would be. Cause you can track changes on the track changes already.
I'm sure there's a way to do that.
No, you can't, no, I know you can't.
Yeah.
You just have to change the color.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right.
Nothing, it's just, this is pretty much cleanup and it seems like, you know, I mean cleanup administratively in chapter one here. And things that protect the township and help you kind of define your job and who does what. Didn't seem like there is anything of great substance changed in Article One. I had a couple of little questions as we go along, but is that?
Yeah, I'd say that's a fair overall assessment of it. I'm always looking for assistance with verbiage and wording and all that, but yeah, by and large, it's administrative, who does what? Authorities, sort of belt suspenders, cover our bases kind of language. You get in a little bit of the permitting aspect, that's probably the, that's probably the most meat and potatoes of it.
Anything else general?
I guess before we start, my plan is eventually, once we get done with our review, you know, commit pending commission approval. Is to probably have a legal entity review this. Possibly even send it to Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, even before they have to do their official review of the initiated amendment. To try to collect that feedback and clean it up as much as we can, I didn't wanna pay frankly, a lot of money for a legal review. With the commission not having seen it and have them reviewing stuff that may or may not actually end up being in the document, so. I thought it made more sense for this group to go through it first before we go take those next steps.
Okay. Good. All right, one dash one.
Are we doing Article One first?
Article One. On one, page one, one. You got anything from?
Page one, one, no.
One oh one to one oh two.
Nope.
All right. You going on second page? I've got my first thing on one oh five, so.
I've got one on one oh four.
Okay. So page one dash three.
Well, sorry, well. It's section one oh five, construction of language.
Okay.
And we go in, it goes on to the next page, page one dash four. Where we define and and or. Should we address shall and may? Cause I thought if somehow it rings in my head that a year or two ago, we had a discussion about. Shall doesn't necessarily mean shall, or it's not an imperative, it's.
On page one, three.
It's one dash three.
It's right before it. At the bottom of the page.
Okay.
And you can change it if you think we need to change it all.
You're saying put them together. You're saying instead of having C and D, you're saying have them all under G.
Oh, maybe just reorganize it.
Sorry, I didn't catch it at the bottom of the page.
I like them the way they are because shall should mean you, that's what you have to do and may is what you don't have to do, may, you may do.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
So then, uh. Same page, one oh five, oh four. We say eastern standard time, what happens when we're daylight savings time? Can we just say eastern time or do we need to say?
Yeah, standard probably shouldn't be in there.
So just eastern time?
Eastern, yeah, the eastern time. I guess I'll look up whatever the official name is, in my mind, that's what I was saying, but yeah, I get what you're saying though.
Yeah.
Standard is, yes.
Standard in daylight.
Yep.
So just eastern time, I think.
Eastern time, yep.
Okay. Anything, one oh six, one oh seven?
One oh seven, point oh one.
Okay.
Small thing, it's like some of the capital letters, like why are we capitalizing height there?
Because they're in the definitions.
Cause they're in the definitions.
Yes.
Yep.
All words that are capitalized are in definitions.
Okay, thank you.
I used it as a proper noun, but yeah, by and large.
That is a very common standard question I wish I could get through these things.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
Capitalizing all those is probably one of the things I'm gonna have to really.
Capital the small H, I'll put the big H, I got you.
Go through and look at.
Yep. All right.
One oh eight, oh one, I think it was legislative amendments to the zoning resolution. What's the legislative amendment versus say?
A legislative act is any change to the text of the resolution or any rezoning of property from one's district to another.
Is that a legislative amendment or is that a quasi judicial?
No, it's legislative, cause you can referendum it.
Okay.
Quasi judicial would be what the B Z A does in granting variances.
Thank you.
My comment there, I don't know if there's an answer for it, the two documents conflict, who decides if they conflict? You know, our big case before was, you know, there was the two point two in the zoning resolution and others densities there and there was, it said they conflicted, but it was debatable.
By and large, ultimately, I would be the trustees, because in minute, any legislative act, ultimately, it requires final approval by the trustees. You would get to review it, but the trustees are gonna have the final say on it. It's not an administrative matter where I'm making that decision, it's gonna be the board.
Okay.
All right, one oh nine?
I have one oh eight still.
One oh eight still, okay.
Uh, so one oh, page, no, one oh eight, sorry, page one, actually, eight, sorry.
Oh, no. Where, hang on, section one oh nine, anything? Okay, one ten is now completely removed and reserved.
And some of that just got relocated.
As well as one eleven and one twelve, so the, um, it looks like it got relocated to one fifteen, you just incorporated in.
Yeah, I was trying to take all the stuff related to permits and pull it all together in one section.
Yep. All right, uh, one twelve?
And one twelve is actually mostly a rehash of language that's already in the code. That it was the section about zoning commission and trustees, and I always thought it was weird that like we lumped both those groups together in one article. Technically, the board having the final say, so I moved them over to Article One and then that way two is purely just zoning commission stuff.
One thirteen oh two, I know it wasn't modified in your version here, but it states shall be considered an administrative action for the final development plan. If it's administrative action, then you get to decide that alone, right?
It's administrative and not necessarily that it's me doing it, it's administrative in terms of how the law looks at it.
Okay.
That you're applying the law, regardless of whether it's me applying the law or you applying the law, the law is just being applied as opposed to the law being changed.
And that's the final development plan, not the original development plan, isn't that the difference?
Not the preliminary development plans.
Preliminary is legislative.
Sort of a conceptual plan, we tend to approve with the rezoning, but we're not really applying the law, I mean, we're, we're. We're sort of authorizing the preliminary development plan, but it's not really a binding approval at that point.
The question of legislative, if I'm not mistaken, it's only the, it's only the rezoning that's a legislative.
Correct, yeah, even the act, which is why we split up the motions.
Okay, okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you.
But the final development is so administrative, that's not taking away the commission piece?
No, no, it's basically just saying you're applying the law as opposed to changing it.
Okay, so it's not subject to referendum?
Correct. And that's a function of Ohio law, that's.
Right, okay.
Not that we control.
Anybody else, one thirteen?
No.
All right, one fourteen. Part H, so one of, one fourteen, oh one, H.
Mm-hmm.
Is there something specific we need to call out for the record retention policy?
Yeah, the township has a record retention schedule.
Is there a, is there, is that a controlled document that we need to put in there or is it just called record retention?
No, it's a, it's a separate document the township has.
Okay, but it's not like a.
It's not a zoning specific, there's a zoning section in it, but there, it's not a zoning specific document, so it doesn't need to be in this.
Actual title name of it.
Oh, you mean the title, I'll get the title.
Is the General Township Zoning.
Yeah.
Record retention policy, or is it a controlled document that has such and such number, dot, whatever?
No, it has an actual title to it, it gets, goes through a state mandated process that gets approved by like every year or every few years.
Wanna put that name?
Have the title to the paragraph.
Put that name directly in there.
All right.
On one fourteen oh one, at the top of that?
Mm-hmm.
Before the letters or?
Before the letters.
Sorry. Okay.
I just wondered why they added zoning inspector exercise discretion. If you could put that up there, Paul.
So go up, no, just the, the initial, initial wording of dot oh one, there you go.
Occasionally, I have to make judgment calls when something is gray or work with the prosecutor's office, so it's basically just saying. Trying to memorialize that, that sort of exists anyway, because. Not everything always in the code that we could, not every situation in our office we get presented with is absolutely black and white, so sometimes I do have to make a judgment call of. This is what I think the spirit and intent of the code is, or you know, I talk to counsel and we get advised on the, what way we should go on something.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, I mean, that's not like I'm gonna exercise that kind of discretion over a density on rezoning or something, and I don't have that kind of authority. I mean, we could put in limited, uh, exercise discretion in limited situations. Or something, if you don't, if you wanna try to maybe make that a little more restrictive, not so open ended, I can do that.
I think it's a good idea, just because I was just wondering, it's like, I don't think anybody would do it, but I think the language is good to have.
Yep. I base, this is basically, sometimes I get a little, you know, pushback of all, you know, it doesn't expressly say you can't, you can. Administer in that way, so I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that.
People always have the right to bring it up to the commission or the B Z A.
Anything I decide is appealable to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right, okay.
So I am not the final end all be all of the zoning law in Genoa Township, far from it.
We beg to differ.
What's that?
Listen, we beg to differ.
All right, anything else on one seven, on for section one fourteen? All right, one fifteen?
Okay.
So C and E.
One or?
Uh, yes, one fifteen oh one, C and E.
Okay.
So basically, a zoning per permit shall not be required when any such item which has been permitted is. Or is otherwise legally nonconforming is being repaired or replaced in kind unless otherwise specified herein. For me, like I, I feel like the or replaced could be out there, I just, I'm just thinking about like the building across, like always here across the street. And I know in E it does mention, mention that, that if you change a building for over fifty, fifty percent. That it, that you, I mean, it actually doesn't specify in E that you do need a permit, which I think it should say that in there. It says something about it, but it never actually states you need a permit for it, except if you, if that is not the case, but.
One fifteen oh one sort of overall states you have to have a zoning permit. And then A through F are sort of the qualifiers to that.
Well, does it, cause if I, I read it like it doesn't need a permit.
Well, cause you can't do any of these foregoing things without first obtaining a zoning permit.
In that, in essence, that first statement. I mean.
In one fifteen oh one, I don't know.
No, no, I, I know. One fifteen oh one C, right, is that the one you're?
Oh, no, I'm reading one fifteen oh one like the, the not, the, the very first.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it's basically saying you must get a permit.
On C?
On one.
Oh, yeah, on one.
The total one fifteen and then it's.
No, on one it does, but then on C it, it does not, and I'm like, if, if this person, like if this building would be still across the street, then he would have. Basically the right to replace the building in kinds, which is like, should we, should that not need permit? Cause then you can just, just replace our grandfathered in building and just put a new building in the exact same spot.
Only if they modified less than fifty percent of the volume.
Well, I know, but why do we have that C in there then, that's just confusing me.
Largely where you see that is like decks.
Decks.
Decks and stuff, people will have a deck, it's falling apart, or they wanna do a different material, they obliterate it and wanna rebuild it from the ground up, I mean. Could I make every project get a permit, yeah, but we try to cut some people some slack and say, well, you know, if it's replacement in kind or repair, we're not gonna.
Okay.
Make you pull the permit for that, so that's largely what it covers. And that's why E is in there because of that kind of situation across the street.
I think someone's gonna pull that out and say, I replaced this building most of it in kind.
Don't think so, because E says that, but it was just confusing to me because it doesn't really specify what is replacing, I rather would have the, the or replaced out there and just say repair, but. Cause I mean, you can repair a deck or like, I mean, it's replacing a deck, not repairing a deck, I mean.
Yeah, I guess you could, you could say it like that. I mean, that's just, that's always been our general, I mean, that's how we administer it now, to be candid, this is basically sort of more, this is essentially memorializing existing practice to a degree.
And, and then also like in E, it doesn't like specifically say you will need a permit. Like I would just add that to the sentence like at, at the end or something that you would need a permit.
I think the thought process being with the way the code is structured, E lives under one fifteen oh one, so it's subject to that original paragraph in one fifteen oh one. But I can add it if we need a clarification.
Well, just because C does say it, it does not need one, that's why I'm like.
Okay, well, so does, yeah, so does D, so yeah, we, if, I get what you're saying now, yeah, cause if you follow that order, you would say, well, C says I don't need one, D says I don't need one.
So you're thinking after, after the period, instead of that period, it should just say like requiring a permit.
Something, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just write zoning permit required and I'll figure out what the verbiage on that should be.
Okay.
Yeah, that's. I'm all about belt and suspenders usually, so that's, that's fine with me.
Sometimes when we have letters following the initial paragraph, there's like a I'm less or in accordance with, I don't know if this meets that or not, but it's kind of like. This, nothing leads you into the letters, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Like, under the following circumstances and less or in accordance, I don't know what word you would use there to tie those letters.
I can add a qualifier like that.
Well, because then, then people will read farther or something, I think, maybe, or.
Subject to the following.
So you tie, yeah, subject to the following, you know. Yep, that's, that's easy.
Next?
Oh, one fifteen oh five?
Hang on, let me deal with three first. In, uh, oh three B?
Oh, three B, okay, yep.
Line one ten or is page one ten, all the D O T stuff is removed and the requirements to comply? Do you feel that is proper without us reading, I mean, again, we only do the first five chapters?
Yeah, I'm gonna probably flag those ones for legal review, cause there's other D O T stuff that pops up in the rezoning. And that was on my list of have legal review these items. I feel like if we don't need to have it in there, I don't wanna have it in there, if we need to have it in there, we'll keep it, but.
Yeah, I just, that, it seemed like a lot of good stuff that you had in there that was, is now stricken, I just wanna make sure it's still.
I know, like, we sent that one note, we had one of these that actually got triggered, we sent, I think it was the one on Big Walnut. I sent something to D O T and I never heard anything on it, so.
D O T or O dot?
Oh, I'm sorry, O dot.
Okay.
So that, that was sort of my thing was. I'm not sure they particularly care, but. I think it sort of also existed from a year, an era when the roads were still very much being expanded and they needed the room for roads. I think a lot of that right away has since been acquired and we don't necessarily need to worry about that so much, but we'll look into it.
You're good. You go.
Yeah, fifteen oh five.
Sorry.
Oh, you, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Point A, point B, it's also just a language thing, um, point one says, um...
I'm sorry, what, so we're on?
One fifteen oh three, uh, it's gonna be point two, but point one says,
Okay.
said permit shall not longer be, be considered valid and does, shall be renewed, that doesn't come back in point two, like, it just states that you have to do this, I just would also like it if that's also in there, but...
You're in one fifteen oh three A.
It's just at the bottom here.
Of that page, okay.
Basically, the, the, like, the first point states, the permits shall not longer be valid, and thus shall have to be renewed if that, if the, if the construction is not started within a year, and the second point talks about the construction of the, of, uh, the, the framing and stuff needs to be done within the, in, in the first eighteen months, I would also just add at the end also that the permits shall not longer be considered valid if this is not the case.
Yeah, I get what you're saying there. I'll look at how I can reword that, I think that language is actually language we moved, that was pre, that already existed, that I just moved, but yeah, I, I understand what you're saying though, so I'll take a look at it.
Any more for oh three? Oh four? Five?
Um, how long does the, um, do you have to keep the zoning permits? It's like, in other words, if I get a permit for fence twenty years ago, will you still have that in case somebody questions it?
The zoning permits, according to the records retention schedule right now in effect, are permanent.
Okay, all right.
Now, do we have absolutely every single one from nineteen fifty-three, or whatever it was? No, but we have the vast majority. And we definitely have the last several years, obviously, we, we're really good at that. Some, from fifties through seventies, sometimes, a little hard to come by. We also had one little glitch in two thousand three, thanks to an IT situation, but... No, now that could always change, they could always change the records retention schedule and say, we got too much paper, there's too many files, we're gonna cut that down to five years, anything over five years, we can just get rid of, the board could do that at any time, but right now they're permanent. So if you need a copy of something, ask for it.
Are you required to keep the paper, or are you imaging everything? What's that? Are you imaging everything, or you've got?
We, well, we keep both, right now. Mm-hmm. We, we're fortunate where the volume we do in terms of permits, we're, at this point, we're under like four hundred a year. We're able to pretty much manage that right now. A lot of the really old ones did get destroyed when they initially digitized them, and then because of that tech snafu, we weren't able to always capture them back. We have better backups in place than the last time that happened, which again, wasn't under my watch, but, um, it is what it is, but that's why we're keeping them, cause as much as I, I'm very confident in the backups we have in the county infrastructure, but sometimes it's just still nice assurance to have that paper, and if it ever became an issue, eh, we could always, there's off-site options for storage that you can do, um, if we ever wanted to look into that. Right now we have the room for them.
Oh six? Seven?
Question on fifteen oh seven?
Fifteen, yeah, okay.
I didn't understand what that title means, construction in use to be as provided, in that case, transfer and severance, does it make sense to you, as a title?
No, it's sort of a goofy title, actually.
I mean, is a construction in use, I don't know, I don't know what it's supposed to say.
It's basically trying to say you're supposed, whatever you build, or whatever your use you establish is, is supposed to be per the materials that, per all those documents.
How about construction in use to be in conformance with approved plans? Is it the construction in use that's bothering you, or is it?
Well, this doesn't make sense, construction in use to be as provided. Only, maybe, construction in use is to be as provided.
Yeah, so, in, in the, in the, in the.
Conformance, to be honest, if we just want a title.
Okay.
Construction conformance?
Well, just call it conformance. Period. I think it's...
We're missing a verb.
Again, it's, it's vestigial, because if you look at like one fifteen oh four, five, and six, that's just, for whatever reason, when this initially got put into the code, that's just how they titled those sections. But we can just call it, yeah, I agree, it's sort of a goofy title. If I think of something better, I'll put it in there, but right now I'll just go with conformance.
One sixteen? One seventeen, I got a few things here.
I thought this might be a section we talked about a little bit more.
All right, um, oops. One seventeen oh one A.
Mm-hmm.
Safety lights. What are safety lights? I think I'm gonna guess, but I want you to answer first.
I probably used the wrong term, especially with the safety guy in the room, so, the lighting that gets required in utility, infrastructure, things like that, so if there's a better term for that, I'm happy to use it.
So like, if somebody wanted to put a pole in their yard and put a metal halide or a high-pressure mercury light to light their entire yard, would that be considered a safety light?
Possibly, so, is, we probably should think of a better term for that.
Okay.
Although, well, no, because any of the lighting that's gonna be required on like a substation is gonna be subject to federal regulation, which trumps us anyway. So I actually, now, now that I think of it, this actually probably...
Is this flashing lights?
Probably, I think of like security lighting.
So, security lighting?
So, you've got a accessory building in your yard, you don't want creatures or people skulking around back there, so you put a light above the door, A, so you, you can see what you're doing when you need to go back there at night, but B, also to sort of dissuade people from being back there.
So, the, one of the reasons I bring it up now is, we've had quite a few hearings in the last couple of years where we've talked about lighting and broadcast lighting, and making sure that it's down lighting, and we had lighting studies done for certain applications that were done. If we look at the entrance to the Grove now, I would be surprised that somebody across the street isn't making some sort of complaint because of how bright those are and spreading across. So, when we define this, or can we put something in that says only downlights will be used, especially with, you know, if we, you know, okay, we had larger space between homes, some of these area lights made sense, now we're closer together, and now you're polluting your neighbors, so who would like us to consider something with a more of a down requirement for lighting, motion triggered?
Can I, can I ask a bigger question?
Go ahead.
On this entire section one seventeen?
Mm-hmm.
Should it be there? And I ask that from the standpoint of, from my perspective, I would rather somebody come in and ask Joe, or ask the staff, do I need a zoning permit for what I'm doing versus trying to interpret on their own the zoning resolution, and maybe interpreting it wrong, and then you get an astegram because, well, you should've and you didn't, and, well, that was my interpretation based on something written in one seventeen, I, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out for discussion.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting, cause I was sort of approaching it from a, oh, here's a nice list that staff can use to communicate out to people, but I wasn't thinking of it from that angle of the user looking at it and making their own determination, and then you trying to use that as an excuse for why they didn't pull a permit. On the safety lights, I think we could get it, we could take that out of there, it's probably not necessary, um, cause we say in other similar types of architectural accent lighting, would, by and large, downlighting on a accessory building would fall under that, and hence that also goes back to the sort of the interpretation discretion thing we were talking about earlier. The downlining requirement, I think it's tricky because you've got all sorts of garage wall sconces and lighting on these piers people put at their end of their driveways, and when you're talking in developments, it makes sense, but you're talking individual homes, uh, you know, multi acres, somewhere out on some area road, that's where it gets a little trickier. I don't know if we really wanna dive into requiring permits for all that kind of lighting, that's, cause now you're asking people to get lighting studies, and it's, it just, it seems a little onerous. I think on the Grove, I, I mean, we could take a look at it, I, I guess I haven't been, I shouldn't say I haven't been by there at night, I guess I haven't noticed the issue, but, um, we do have control over that with the developments.
Right, now, yes, we, we do.
That's my concern here is...
I'm just thinking about, we've had even some really nice homes get, hey, these little parcels, we're starting to do this.
Yep.
And now there's a lot of, if somebody puts up a big area light, then, I don't know, that's my concern right now.
Yeah, lighting's always a tricky one, cause, you know, there's just so many things you can do with it, and then if I try to get too strict with people, they say, well, I have a big investment in this property, that's a big expensive barn, I should have the right to light it the way I need to, to provide the security I need to protect my investment, that's, that's the pushback we get.
Okay, but, I mean, there's wall sconces that go up and they're downlit, they don't need to...
Isn't there something for the, you know, plan developments in the lighting article about downcast, but I agree with both those comments.
That's specified in, in the DOD.
Yeah, but I, I think some wording to that extent should be in there, because it should be to say not to shine in the neighbor's eyes, or, you know, not to extend beyond the property lines. I think, cause you really shouldn't be lighting up, and of course, that's also questionable, cause light does go places, but...
Well, yeah, lighting is tough, because it's really subjective a lot of times, and the only accurate way to measure it would require specialized equipment and training, and again, I don't know, I just, if you're just some, you know, homeowner who's been here for decades and you just wanna pull a sconce light on your building, and now you're being told you gotta pull a permit and get a lighting specialist to draw up, it's pretty onerous to ask of a resident.
Why can we not put something in that you, under your discretion, if someone has a complaint, that, under your discretion, you can pull the permit or something, I don't know if that's possible, but...
Well, I do appreciate the discretion, that's probably not the kind of discretion I would want in this situation.
I mean, if it's...
Well, you know, the noise ordinance basically says the police officer comes out and listens, so why can't somebody go out and look at it at night and say, oh yeah, that shines right in this guy's eye?
Then you're subjective, you need to have a light meter in order to do that, and then you have to set standards on what the light would be.
The, the cops have, I think, a little more leeway in terms of making that determination of what's disturbing the peace as opposed to a zoning official. Like, yeah, li, like I said, lighting's tough, it's one of the, I mean, when this came up with one of the properties we got complaints about recently, I mean, I, I think the board eventually came down on the opinion of, and we even did some research after the fact that there's, there's, it's, it's a civil ma, I mean, by and large, if you've got a neighbor that's blinding you, it's a civil matter. We can control the developments, but when it comes to residential lighting, unless, again, we're gonna start making people pull permits for every light bulb they wanna pull in.
No, I mean, it's architectural, you got uplights, you got downlights, you've got landscape lights, I mean, I think those are, that, that really shouldn't be something. But, you know, like the, well, some, somebody made the, the one on Big Walnut Road, they lit up all those, they had those little side fire lights that were brighter than crap, and then now they're off. I think somebody made them turn them off, it was right on, between here and Route Three, on the south side of Big Walnut, they had...
I don't think that was us.
Little spotlights that were pointed directly east on their driveway, they were like spotlights, and every time you drove by, they were there.
I mean, even if you... That wasn't us.
No, okay. Or the new, the new parking lot light at the veterinary center, you drive, you drive west on Big Walnut Road, for about halfway from Old Three to New Three, that thing is shining right in your eyes.
Is it down?
Oh, it is, but it's angled up.
I need to, cause I did authorize that one, but it's supposed to be flush.
It's a parking lot light, and you can see all their little, they're angled up, just enough that it's just a bright light right down the street.
Yeah, I mean, you get it at the right angle, you're gonna be able to see up in any of those lights.
It's halfway down the road, all the way to the stoplight.
Same thing, I pulled up to that stoplight and it's right in your face, and it looks like, almost like maybe it got bumped or something, cause it's definitely...
I'll, I'll take a look at that one, cause that's supposed to be to the ground, cause I did look at that.
Yeah, I, so, I mean, the wording on all that, I mean, I think, I agree, the accent lighting, coach lights, those types of things.
Yeah, I'm gonna take out safety lights, cause I agree with you.
The safety light one is the one I've got concerned, because if somebody puts up a thousand watt metal halide, and all of a sudden, it's all over the place.
I agree. I agree.
F. Is there any way we can look to, if we go down just a few letters to J, we do put a limitation on height of six feet? Can statues have the same requirement?
I can look into that.
Go ahead.
I see where you're going with that, cause they're almost, they're, they're very similar in terms of their base.
Yes.
Structural look, the only thing I think you get a little bit, uh, statues, you, you start get a little, in artwork, you get a little bit of the freedom of expression issue.
I, yeah?
But, uh, we'll take a look at it, I mean, we're gonna have a legal review done, if they, if they have an issue with it, though.
I would, that's, I think, legal would be wonderful there.
Do you wanna set, maybe a setback? Well, I guess, yeah, you really don't want putting, someone putting up some statue, and it's... I'd like to think no one would put up like a fifteen, twenty foot tall statue, but you just, you never know. For the same degree, is it lawn decor? It gets, yeah, it could...
Again, we're getting into the subjectivity here, so...
Well, then, is it a structure, and then does it need a building permit?
Okay.
I guess it depends on how it's put onto the ground.
Somebody could go park a rusty old car in their front yard and say it's artwork, right? When it's really not. I don't know.
Yeah, it's, we, yeah, we've had that one too, where the people wanna park.
Or, or an airstream trailer, yes. But, as long as you put mannequins up in front, it's creating art, right?
Yeah.
It's just decoration. Uh, let's see. K. Drainage, infrastructure, driveways, and grading improvements, including bridges, culverts, ditches, drains, gutters, mounds, stormwater basins, and swales. Uh, what about outflow of such items? If you're not requiring a permit or anybody to do anything, is there any limitation to what a homeowner may do with those things?
Uh, drainage is one of those goofy things that the state law doesn't really do a great job, I, I mean, drainage is really a county authority, unless it's an township right of way.
So, do we need to put a qualifier on there that meets county standards?
Well, there's some things, there's some drainage that the county doesn't even have standards on, it just falls below their threshold, they're not gonna get involved with it.
Okay.
I basically am trying to get us out of the drainage game because...
Thank you.
We're not gonna win there.
It's, yeah, I, I, I'm not a PE, I'm not qualified to, yeah, I can see water goes downhill, but I'm really not qualified to thoroughly analyze it, or certainly not cite someone on it.
But again, is somebody gonna look at this and go, well, all right, I don't need a zoning permit, and that's the, that's where their analysis stops, and then they don't even consider going to the county?
I could put, like, subject to Delaware County regulations.
Delaware County soil and water department's great about coming out, they, they can't make somebody do something, but they can advise you how to do it.
Yeah, I like your point, though, of directing people that there is someone who does deal with this, so we're not saying you're free and clear.
And do we? I guess the Hoover overlay doesn't fall into this, cause we didn't, drainage was just how we developed it.
The watershed is how we develop.
Yeah.
We just use that as the defined borders, but we don't regulate how the drainage works within it, correct? We do have some buffers from drainage areas, but we're not regulating the construction of the drainage.
Anybody else in those sections? Okay. So we're done with Article One?
I will say in Article One, there's one provision in there, I took it out of the draft I gave you, I may put it back in in a modified form. It's basically a provision that says when you get a zoning permit, that is giving the township the right to inspect your property, regular business hours, Monday through Friday, whatever it is, for this, during the duration of that project, to verify compliance of that specific project. I gotta be really careful with the wording to make sure I don't run afoul of some illegal search provisions, but, I, I mean, I was at OTA's conference last week, and I actually asked one of the attorneys there about that, and they're like, yeah, if you put on their application, that, by signing this application, I acknowledge that I am opening my property up to inspection of, during the duration of this project, of this improvement, you know, during this timeframe, that we actually do, would have the authority to do that. I don't know how often we'll do it, usually we try to do our inspections from the road on public properties, so we don't have to enter private property, cause there's a lot of liability that comes with entering private property, both for us and, um, the homeowner, but it's something I'm looking at putting in in case... But it's something I'm looking at putting in, in case we do need to use it, that we would have it, so.
Are you saying you don't enter private property during the development process?
Well, we do, we can go on, as a general manner, like The Grove, we'll drive in there. But you building a shed or a pool, I am not getting out of my car and walking around in your backyard to look at your pool. Unless you ask me back there. I can come knock on your door and ask to go back around. And if you tell me to get off your property, I'm gonna get off your property. But right now, we are not doing that. But again, most of the time, because we need to see if someone put a fence up around their pool, you can see it from the road. But there could be situations where we need to get off. But I, I'm still sort of looking into it, because I want to make sure if we do do that, that we're really minding our Ps and Qs and are on the right side of the law there. Because I don't want to be in a situation where we're on property where we should not be on property. And again, because of liability issues, I'm not even sure I want to do it by and large, you know, there's.
Yeah, but by having it in there, it would entitle you the right to do it, even though you might not.
Yes, if I needed to get in there, especially if there was a question of conformance and there was reasonable suspicion or, you know, we had a really good reason to go back there. But again, you know, I don't know who's got dogs where and, you know, what holes are in someone's yard. I prefer not to do it, but if we can do it, I don't know why we wouldn't at least put in the code that we can do it if we want to.
I think you gotta put it on both. I think you gotta put it on the application and put it in.
Yeah, that's, that's what we would do. We'd put the right to do it in here and then the applications would have to have it too.
I think you need, I would agree you need to have that.
Again, how often I'll actually use it, I don't know. I'm still sort of noodling best course of action there, but.
Article Two, anybody?
So, um, I, I think for Article Two, our responsibilities, um, I feel like our duties are not, um, very well stated in this document, like all our duties. So, um, it's like, it mostly starts at like two oh one oh seven and two oh one oh eight. Um, and it's, I mean, it's missing one, but I would also state like these are the duties of the zoning commission or something like that. Let me just see here. So first of all, the zoning commission shall initiate and review all proposed amendments to the reso- to this resolution and make recommendation to the township trustees in accordance with Article twenty, uh, six. I would also add maybe, uh, also to the comprehensive plan. I don't know if that needs to be in the zoning resolution, but I, I mean, that's what we can do, so.
So what you're getting a little bit into is here is Ohio revised code statute.
Okay.
We can expand our authority beyond what the statute says. In fact, this even ties back to the fact, years ago, this group used to be called the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we even got told then, that's great that you want to do planning, but the statute says you're called a zoning commission. They actually had to remove the word planning. I mean, that's how strict they got about it. So, um.
So we cannot change anything on the language of these?
The code, unless the board wants to delegate you certain authorities. Technically speaking, the board is able to initiate a code amendment, as is the public. When it comes to comprehensive plan, the, the law's sort of silent on that. The revised code is notoriously bad about talking about comprehensive plans and what they are and how they work. So. I can look at it, but I, that, that's why I'm a little cautious on this particular conversation, because we can't, we really can't do. I mean, I can tell you like preliminary development plan is not verbiage that appears in the revised code, but I'm basically just expounding upon the administrative actions and we're just using our verbiage for that act, for that right. But, um. I mean, you do have the ability to undertake comprehensive planning efforts, that is one of your reasons for existing. I thought that says it somewhere, does it not?
It does.
I mean, I can go back and look at the statute, make sure we caught everything, but, um, this verbiage has been in there a long time.
Yeah, just like, if you go back to like the, the, go, go one article further to the Board of Zoning Appeals, like they're, like, they're, they're, they have like so many pages of what they, what they can do. And we, it's not, I understand what you're saying, but like copying it from the Ohio Revised Code, but it's, it's kind of frustrating that some of these things are not in here. Like, there was a, a second thing, like, it doesn't say anything about rezoning requests. Like, it's, it doesn't state anything that we will be the ones, um, handling, like, looking, reviewing this, uh, rezoning requests.
Well, that's what an amendment to this resolution is. That's, I guess I need to add.
It's a rezoning request, or is that, is that an amendment to this resolution? No, right?
Well, I will add this, in twenty one oh seven. We need to probably add or Article twenty seven. Because, so basically you get into sort of the, the hyper specifics of the law. An amendment, a rezoning to the zoning map, the zoning map is technically part of this resolution. So when you're saying you're amending the resolution, that is, we can clarify it if you want, beer, that also captures the rezoning action.
So you would say to this resolution and its zoning map or something?
Yeah, resolution and or zoning map, yeah.
Okay.
We could do that, yep, that's not an issue.
And then also like the two oh one oh eight, um, it talks about, um, preliminary development plans and the final development plans. But it never really states the word plan, like, uh, uh, by itself, like, that we, um, that, that, that a planned development will have to come for, uh, come in front of the commission. Like any plans.
Well, if you're a preliminary development plan, you're.
Well, it says preliminary plan, it doesn't even say, it doesn't say, um. What, what am I saying? Plan, yeah, okay. I mean, what, what is a plan, you know, is that, doesn't say planned, you know, what is a plan?
Well, if you look at the definitions of those, that's where you get into the definition section of what are those items? And like, if, so if you look at what a preliminary development plan is. Let me find it. All of those developments by their nature are planned developments.
Yeah.
And I thought that's how we define that, and I gotta find it. Uh, where did I put it? Well, maybe is it under development plan? See, I wrote it and sometimes I have a hard time. Remembering where I put everything. There we go. Develop, it's under development plan. Um, there's a whole long definition, I'm gonna spare you the. The whole spiel of it, but it is a defined term. And it does use the term planned development in there. It takes a while to get there, but it does mention it.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it sucks, I guess, that we cannot add verbiage to this, to clarify.
Well, what, what specific actions are there? I mean, I don't know what else the commission does. Recommend, you review zoning text changes, zoning map changes, and you have authority over develop, planned developments.
Yes.
And you get involved in comprehensive planning. I mean, that's the limits of it. So the really only thing that isn't really mentioned is comp planning. I guess I could make a note that, see if I can fit that in there. But that's, I mean, I feel like the stuff you do in terms of divergences and stuff, that's all inherent to the planned development process. So I don't think you need to expound upon those in this section.
Does a preliminary development plan necessarily mean a rezoning?
No.
But you do have to have a reason, so, okay. I, I think, I like adding the word rezoning in there and comprehensive plan.
Well, that's what the, that's what amendments to the zoning map is. A re, an amendment to the zoning map is a rezoning. That's just the old fashioned way of saying it.
Okay.
So you're just gonna add like, to this resolution and its zoning map or?
To the resolution and or zoning map, yeah, that's what I plan on doing.
Okay.
And then I also will add a citation to Article twenty seven at the end of that, because depending on what you're doing, will dictate which of those articles you're under.
Okay.
Anything else for two? Three?
I have one. Three oh one oh one.
Mm-hmm.
Last sentence. Um, none of the members shall concurrently serve as a member of the Township Trustees, the Zoning Commission or Architectural Review Board. Do we have, are we specifying that out as a?
We don't have an Architectural Review Board, but the Revised Code provides that we could have one if we wanted one.
So should we have something in this document that we don't have?
In terms of Architectural Review Boards?
Yes.
Um, since we've never established one, I mean, theoretically, yes. I don't want to establish one because we don't have one. I feel like if we were.
I'm not thinking we should establish one, but my question was, since we don't, since we don't, right, since we don't have one. We're referencing that they can't serve on something that we're not providing for them to serve on.
Could you just not add like?
Like, I just think that, shouldn't that just be stricken, because it doesn't exist?
Or just say like, if one is in place or something, I mean, if one is.
Yeah, we could do that, should the latter exist.
If we ever would make one, I don't think we.
I think that's what I was just trying to do, is if there ever is one in here, not having to remember to go back to the standard and add it in.
I mean, there was the.
Like, should one be established? Is that what you're thinking, like, so that the words stay in there?
Yeah.
Um.
Well, just in case they ever did put one, because.
If the board ever creates one, it's basically.
Covered.
Covered, yeah.
Okay.
Couple of years ago, the rule was put in that we couldn't serve on multiple committees at the same time, so you couldn't be on like the finance committee.
That, yeah, that's a township policy, not a state policy.
But does that need to get?
No, I would like, I would, that's a standalone board policy. Because that, that has nothing to do with the Revised Code, that's just the board saying, our preference is we not have that crossover.
No, so, so we're considering adding language, something about the, an ARB if it's, should one be established or something? Is that what you were thinking?
I'm hesitant to put it in there, because I don't want to make people think one exists. I know it's mentioned here, which could raise that, I guess raises the question that you just raised, so I guess it could make people think it exists, so I see what you're sort of saying.
Right, like, I want to be appointed to the ARB that we don't have.
Why not just put accurate in parentheses, if established?
Yeah, I think that's the best case scenario.
That way.
There you go.
Because if we have zoning, we're for certain gonna have the first two, but yes, the, the last one is.
But not necessarily the third, correct?
Correct.
Any more for three oh one? Three oh two? I do a question about three oh three, there's a whole bunch that's been removed.
Mm-hmm.
Is it captured someplace else or?
Yeah, all, a lot of the stuff pertaining to conditional uses got moved to Article seventeen.
Okay.
I'm not gonna say all of that language survived exactly as written there, but yes, all the conditional use stuff is in seventeen.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Well, anything that's not procedural.
But conditional use as you permitting and or us looking at it is not different than the BZA looking at it? They don't have a different set of rules that they have to look at on conditional use?
Well, you guys don't look at conditional uses. Basically, the way I've structured it though, is if it's a conditional use in one district, but it's a use by right in a planned district. I'm gonna direct you to the same standards. So regardless of whether the BZA is looking at it, the zoning commission's looking at it, we're gonna use the same set of standards. Unless there's a very unique situation where we could think that we want to make that distinction, which I can't think of one off the top of my head. But if it's a daycare here and it's a conditional use and the BZA looks at it, we're gonna use the exact same daycare standards for a daycare in a planned district that you would look at. That's the theory. Generally speaking, anyway.
Excuse me. Three oh four?
I've got one, three oh four oh one. Three oh four, it says three oh four oh two B, I think it's actually three oh four dot oh one B. It says, uh, shall be mailed by the Chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals as cross town zoning inspectors in. I don't think you need to say Chair of the.
Oh, yep, that should have been.
And I think is it should be, is that three oh four oh one then also?
That is three oh four oh one B.
Right.
Yep, I see, I get what you're saying.
To B at the moment.
That was supposed to come out, that, chair mention was supposed to come out.
That's all blocked out.
Well, it's blocked out, but I don't see the new one.
Down here. Look down, it's on the previous page, three oh four oh one.
Oh, okay, I got you, okay.
And there is some movement at the state level to change the public notification requirements. I've tried to build this to be as flexible as I can to be responsive of this, to that. Basically, they're, they're trying to get the state law into the twenty first century and realize that a lot of the local papers are gone. And allowing people to say, if you have a website, as long as you, that utilizing your website basically now serves the purpose of posting in the newspapers. There's, there's legislation working its way through the State House that might change some of that.
Yes, because I think we advertise in the Gazette and I would say of our twenty four thousand residents, most don't, most, some, but most don't get the Gazette as a normal.
Correct.
Purchase pay.
I, I would, I don't know that for a fact, but I wouldn't be surprised if it was true. And also the hard copy of the Gazette is only published now like two days a week. We're down to like Wednesday and Saturday. But because the law says published in the actual newspaper, not published in the online version of the newspaper, published in the newspaper as in the hard copy. We're now limited to, we've got to be real careful internally when we send those advertisements now, make sure we send them in time to make that paper. Because it used to be, you could send it in like two days prior to the paper printing and you could get it in there. Now we've got to be like, send it a week plus in advance to make sure we can hit Wednesday or Saturday, depending on what the deadline is.
Okay.
Now that said, we can always go above and beyond the public notification requirements of the state. If the state says you have to do this, we'll say, okay, we're doing this. But we're all, if we still wanted to mail or run it into the Gazette, we could. Again, I don't know why we would tie our hands that way if we didn't have to. It's one of those things, even if we wanted to continue to do it, we could continue to do it, but I'd probably vouch for not codifying it in the zoning resolution anymore.
Alright, anything else in Article Three? On to four.
This is where I expect some serious wordsmithing. Unless you want to jump to five first and go back to four. Although five has its own.
No, five, no.
Five, I forgot, five has the table.
Five, no, five is a whole nother ballgame.
Yeah, that's true.
Alright, um. I do have one on the first page, anybody else? Alright, in a, the addition.
Mm-hmm.
Crap, where, what was that on? It says, and improvements.
Oh, I see, and, so not include and improvements, that's another.
Improvements, yeah, what is that actually saying?
It should say any.
Any, okay, thank you. Anything else on that page?
Alright.
My next one's not till Cs.
And I expect some of these definitions may change or be modified based on the conversation we have about the tables, so.
Yep. Anybody else say As or Bs? No? Alright, going to campground.
Mm-hmm.
Page four, five. Does fee have to be a function of a campground?
In terms of getting the fee in exchange for the space?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, an establishment offering in exchange for a fee, blah, 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 all that stuff. So if they're not doing a fee, does it qualify as campground?
Not as from a use perspective it wouldn't. Can we think of a situation where they wouldn't be getting a fee for it?
Like if a charity owned it, right? Is that what you're thinking?
Voice gap.
And they just let somebody, yeah, like if it.
I guess, I guess they don't charge Cs, do they?
What is it, a P C F and they put people in the, it's a planned community facility, but they're gonna allow camping?
We can take out an exchange for a fee, I'm fine with that. I really wasn't thinking about the charity ones, so.
Encompassing, I think it would.
I don't want like someone to put a tent up in their backyard and for people to try to claim it's a campground, but.
I'm sure you would.
A reasonableness standard here.
I'm sure you could, somebody could make the argument that I could move in ten trailers in my backyard and they're really running a, they're not charging anybody, but they're all living there.
Yeah, that's a campground, yeah. Yeah, so I agree, it probably should come out.
So are you saying you're gonna open up your land to house the overflow from O'Hare and Goodway Airports?
No.
This weekend, everybody's taking our campers in.
Just wanted to make sure.
Take that one as a bank.
Alright, um. Anybody, I gotta, I'm, I'm down to club, so next page four dash six, anybody on before that? Why is a club not for profit?
Are there for profit like clubs, like the, I guess I, I think of like the Lions Club and Union. union, I guess our unions for profit, not really.
So you're thinking like the lodges and the FWs and-
Yeah.
Okay. What if it were like the-
We can take not-for-profit out of there, it's probably not necessary.
Speak easy or you got to pay a fee to be a part of said location, wouldn't that classify as a club in the ORC?
If you're a speak easy and you're serving drinks and you're for-profit, you're not a club at that point, you're a drinking establishment.
Okay, what if you're a cigar lounge? Smoking club.
I'd have to look through the other uses to see if there was something else in there.
You're thinking not-for-profit should come out.
I'm just thinking not-for-profit should come out, it is a private establishment, but it may be for-profit or not-for-profit, I don't-
Yeah, we can take it out, I agree, I don't think that distinction is necessary.
I think that's smart.
So I think we'll take that out.
It wasn't in there before, you don't need it now.
Got it. All right. Commercial motor vehicle. I would recommend striking everything in that and just referring to the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration as to their definition. You're calling, you're calling out twenty-six thousand pounds, that's now CDL, that's not commercial. Commercial is ten thousand and one and above on gross vehicle weight or combined weight.
Okay, I, I thought you would probably have a better definition than what I had. I pulled this definition on like some online research, so I wasn't sure if it was still current.
What you need to refer to is FMCSA, which is Federal Motor Carrier Association.
I'm sorry, can you use FM?
FMCSA.
CSA.
Statute three nine zero dot five.
Three nine zero dot five.
If you just refer to that and don't put anything else in it, it qualifies everything, it's ten thousand and one pounds and above.
That'll make it a lot easier. Cool. Yeah, I'm glad you said that, because I thought that was probably a dated definition, but I didn't know.
Yeah, so twenty-six thousand and one is CDL, we don't need to even worry about that.
And that was actually one of those ones, I thought, I could do a lot of research and try to figure this out, but I bet David Love will know.
Yeah, all right, next, anybody else in Cs? Ds? All right, Es, educational institution. Page four dash eleven.
Mm-hmm.
We are calling out specific locations, do you want to add Otterbine? Is local type, we have Ohio State, we have-
Oh, yeah, we can call them out, yeah. It's been the example list.
Yep.
Yep.
So that's an educational institution B, so sorry, it's on the next page.
I was thinking of facilities that are here or have been here.
Yep.
But I, I, with Otterbine being close, yeah, that's fine.
Well, they're, they have the horse facility, they're in our district, they're in the township.
Well, they used to be, yeah, they used to be in the township.
The horse facility is still in the township?
No, the one on Spring Street, that's Westerville.
That falls into Westerville.
Oh.
It's below us.
But they used to be here, so, under my theory, they should be in the list, yes. And I also like, well, you know what, no, it's Otterbine Public.
Private.
No, then they shouldn't be on the list.
Then they shouldn't be.
Okay.
That makes sense. All right, anybody else got E's or Fs? Gs? Now we're going to get to my favorite one.
What is that?
Height.
Oh, yes, height. So, may I explain what we're doing here a little bit? So, several years ago, and Chairman Left maybe the only ones here from when we had this discussion initially, I apologize if anyone else was, but I don't, I think it was just Chairman Left at that point. After the expansion to Genoa Baptist Church, not the school, but the expansion of the sanctuary got built, the commission at the time wasn't overly thrilled with how tall that building was, and they wanted to change how we measured height. So we changed it to what it currently is. It used to have all these different provisions about, well, if it's a different type of roof, this is how we measure and we do averages and stuff. And then we went to a flat, it was a simplified definition. And, but what we have found, based on some of the public comment we've received the past couple of years, is it's not working out well on the residential buildings at all. And in fact, if you go to a lot of the houses that were built under the old definition, so basically what I'm reverting it back to is for residential, the old way of doing things. And for non-residential, which would have covered the Baptist Church situation, keeping it generally the new way of things. And I did do some research and I asked Legal if we could break it out between residential and non-residential, and I was told yes. So, and then we have obviously different provisions for signs and structure height and wind power turbines. But that, that's the theory, I think, go, we didn't have any problems on residential structures under the old way of doing things. And none of the problems that we're currently dealing with started popping up until we changed the code. So, staff would very much strongly prefer to go back to the old style way of doing things for residential buildings. Because candidly, if you look at, there's a lot of residential buildings that we rendered not compliant probably with the code when we changed it the last time. So we're basically just try, especially with here in this township, it's an affluent area, we get a lot of pretty large homes being built, not even just now, but I mean, even years ago, we had a lot of large homes being built. We see a lot of stuff in this office, so I mean, we obviously need to cap it somewhere, we don't want things to get ridiculous, but the current methodology is just not flexible enough for us on residential. It's just, we're going to be sending people to the BZA all the time, and usually if you start sending people to the BZA all the time, and especially if the BZA is consistently approving it, it's usually a sign that the code needs fixed. So we've already done, what, a handful of, three of them in the last, I don't know, year?
So in general, we capped it at thirty-five feet, which was the very peak of the roof at thirty-five feet.
Yep.
This now allows for the median of the roof to be thirty-five, so the peak can extend above.
But there's still some limitations to that.
Limitations based on what we're talking about.
In Article sixteen, but-
So, we would not have some of the issues that have been brought up here lately.
Yes, that's exactly the theory, I mean- Paul, how tall was that one? On Sunbury Road with the big turret?
Forty-four.
Forty-four, the BZA approved forty-four feet. Now, it's case by case basis at the BZA.
That was an extra piece, it was kind of, it's an added function of the house, that wasn't the roof line.
Correct, but under the old definition, that was part of the house.
Would it have passed approval without going to BZA on the older system?
No, that was so tall that would have even, probably had to.
So that would-
I, I guess, I didn't do the measurements, but I'd be, I strongly suspect they probably would not have.
And that was a huge discussion when Genoa Baptist did.
Yes.
That was a huge-
We had a massive discussion, because then we had to figure out what grade level you would actually measure from.
Correct, and that's why we ended up wording it the way we did. And I think it's easier on the non-residential projects also to get a final grade elevation at the time that they propose the plans. It's much more difficult for the homes, because they're always, those grades are, you know, you got walkout basements, there's so many things going on, the grades on residential structures.
You also made, it's eight inches down from-
Yes, we clarified that too.
The township point as well, you've clarified that, so it doesn't matter how much they mount it, it's eight inches, that's-
Correct, yep. Because that's what we were hearing too, well, you know, what if we pile up all, you don't know where the final dirt line is going to be, you know, what if they put a garden bed in, and it was like, oh my gosh.
We put that one to death way back when, but-
Yep. So, I think what we did for non-res was right at the time, I think we just overshot and probably should have kept residential what it was. Because it create, we had an area where we had no problems with residential and then we sort of accidentally created issues, so. I figured the best middle ground was to split the difference and keep what worked and change what wasn't working.
Any comments, questions, discussion points on that one?
No.
We're good?
And I tried to look up every type of roof that I could like Google, I tried to put it in the list. I'm sure there's one out there I missed, but I tried to get as much as I could. Now, I would say maybe as we continue to look at this, making sure that each one of those roofs, if you Google them, those shapes, you feel like they're in the right area of one, two, three, and four. And I'll take a look at it too, but I was basically Googling those roof types and saying, okay, well, it looks akin to this type of roof, so I'll put it in this list, but if we feel like there's a difference of where it should be, you know, I'm all ears on that.
Okay. Sign height? We're measuring just to the top of what we're measuring for sign area? I was just trying to think of somebody that would do something crazy, like put a post that's ten feet tall and only have the sign that only goes up three feet? But this post is sticking up?
Well, your structure height still gets limited, though.
So, okay, but we don't need to put the topmost of any point of the structure on that one?
No, I don't think so, we still have structure height limitations.
All right. Anybody else?
No.
All right, who's got, my next one is an R.
I, I did have one question.
Yes.
On D and E, you broke out wind powered turbine tower height, but you did not break out solar structure height?
Yeah, that's, I think that may have been because, I didn't write the wind powered turbine stuff, so I didn't see the model language that initially came out of. Since it was called out already separately, I think elsewhere in the code, I just moved it here to be under all the height stuff in the same section.
Solar's in D, though.
Yeah, what she's saying is why isn't like an F that says-
I'm saying is you're referencing them in D, and then you, you pull the wind powered turbines out in E.
We could do that and put solar and say, you know, add a letter in there and say for solar facility structures, and either repeat the language or refer to the structure height. That's actually probably not a bad idea, because like-
I think, I would suggest that.
So are you saying standalone solar or rooftop solar and what it extends above roof line?
Solar facility structures, right?
I would say solar facility structures. I'm not getting into somebody's personal residence there.
And we have later in the solar section, all those standards about roof mounted and- We haven't read that far yet. Correct, but it's in there. Actually, that's, all the solar stuff was the model language we got from Brochus Johnson and Greggs. Basically, all I had to do was fill in blanks and then just copy and, you know, arrange it in the order that made sense in our code.
Okay.
That doesn't mean you can't do something different than what they provided us, but it was a good foundation.
All right, we got home nursing, I don't know.
Home nursing?
I just saw a typo in there.
Oh, yeah.
The word illness.
Yes, yes, there is. Must have been like the old English way of saying it.
Oh, look at that. Okay. H's, I's. J's, K's. I'm going to ours.
Where are you? Where, where are you going to?
R.
I have one in M.
You have M?
Multi-family building.
Multi-family building, okay.
So, it says, said buildings contains either two or more dwellings within a building having a common exterior access point, or a building containing separate units. And I would, I would also suggest to put something about exterior access points for the second one too with the separate unit, so that it's known that these units have their own exterior exits. Separate units, okay, yeah, I, I think I understand what you're saying there.
So the, just separate units with unique entries?
Yeah, or, yeah, something like that.
Unique access points?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that, to me, it's going to look more like a rowhouse then, but I don't know how that's that qualifies as something else. Yeah, you just never know how they're going to design them. That's the tricky part, yeah, but I, I see what you're saying.
Okay.
So you're at R?
Yeah. Hey, yeah, recreational facilities, four dash thirty-one.
Yep.
Why are we pulling recreational facilities private completely out?
I think just because I use different naming structure, so they now fall under that recreation and or instructional facility. I mean theoretically, I don't know if we really need the governmental one there either. I think governmental is there because it gets referenced in a different definition. I guess I thought what was private recreational facilities would now fall under recreation and or instructional facility. And then making the distinction of whether it was indoor or outdoor.
Okay.
Should the word private be added to that then? For just clar- clarification of people? Or no?
Maybe we could, I'm not sure it's necessary, but-
I mean, I think it says commercial, I think it's-
Yeah, the definition says commercial.
Yeah. Where would someplace like the Hoover Yacht Club or would that fall under this?
Um, I'd have to look at all the definitions, they might fall under, sometimes you have more than one use classification too. So, like marinas in here, they might be a marina, they could be an outdoor recreational facility, because they're obviously outside sailing. You know, the devil would be in the details, but yeah, I would probably look at it something like that.
So do we want to limit it to just commercial? Because that's, I mean, that's a private entity.
We could put private, I mean, to, I guess, Ms. Walsh's point, we could just change commercial to the word private, and I think it's sort of covers both of those bases. Just because it's private doesn't necessarily mean it's commercial, right? And that, that's the whole club discussion, right, that we just had?
I mean, you could have, I mean, I'm thinking you could have someplace that's open to the public to come into, but you could also have a private facility.
Yeah, and private doesn't necessarily mean it's not open to the public, it just means it's not publicly owned, right? Like the private, like as in the private sector.
But the one over at Lake of the Woods, you have to be a member.
Well, then that would bring like the club, so there's another use added onto that, that's now a club too.
Okay.
So, I'm finally going to the way it is.
Okay.
You want me to change commercial to private though for that reason?
I, I'm fine with how it is. You think it's a good idea?
I'll, I'll change it to private, I actually, that was the word we were using before, so it makes sense.
Okay. Dial on that sword for that, but-
All right, any more Rs? This is, I have one. Shopping center.
Ah, yes, shopping center.
Uh, just the, it's really just reorienting A, B, and C, because everywhere else we go from large to small, that one we jump around.
Oh, yep.
So just put C first. CAB is really the order that it should be.
Okay.
Everything else we've done before in there is large, medium, small.
On the size, yep.
Just want to match it.
Got it.
I had a question. Under the adult arcade and the adult, and you have, you added in there both known and unknown, I'm sorry, uh, four dash thirty-six.
Four dash thirty-six, okay.
Including and all technological or virtual successors, both known and unknown?
Mm-hmm.
Why did you think we needed to add both known and unknown?
I just wouldn't want some attorney, no offense, Mr. Walsh, to come in and say, well, there's this new technological advancement and your code doesn't specifically call that out, so.
Okay.
We're, trying to find a loophole, I'm just trying to prevent someone from trying to, especially with that particular topic.
Yes.
It's for the holograms.
Hologram, yeah, the holograms. Holograms or the VR glasses.
It's way easier to probably say that than to try to sit here and think of every like-
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's why it's there. Does it need to be in there? I don't know, but like I said, that's one of those uses I prefer to be safe over, sorry.
Oh, Demolition Man? Sylvester Stallone's Sandra Bullock? How good in the future?
There is one else that would- Arnold Schwarzenegger where he's a-
You have bookstore as one word and bookstore as two words.
Aha.
Um, in thirty-six, under, in B, it's one word and on four- Um, in thirty-six, under, in B, it's one word, and on four thirty-seven, under adult novelty store, you have adult bookstore as two words.
Okay, so that appears different areas?
Yeah, they're just, they're referencing each other, but they're spelled differently.
I see.
With a space and without a space.
Was in B on four thirty-six, where was the other one?
Four thirty-six, B.
Yeah.
And then on four thirty-seven, H.
H.
One has a space, one does not.
Got it, yep, got it.
And J.
Yep.
Oh.
We'll go with the, with the two separate words, because I agree with you, it's one, it's two separate words.
Okay. Anybody else on Article Four?
I, I have one, one that's actually not in there that I like to add.
Oh, okay.
Juicy.
In table, um, five oh six later.
Yeah.
Is mentioned telecommunications accessory, like what is telecommunications accessory?
Oh, did I not put that in there?
I thought not, but maybe I'm overlooking it, I don't think so, but-
I'm sorry, where are you?
Okay, wait, so five oh what?
So, in, in table five oh six, um, one of the accessory uses is tele- telecommunications accessory. And I, my question is, what is that? There was no definition for that.
I'll make a note that I need to check that. It may get brought up back in twenty-two when we talk about all that stuff. But I agree, if we're using it as a term, we should define it, because that was my whole working theory on all of this. So, um, I'll go back, I'll reference twen- I'll look at twenty-two. If it's not in there, I'll figure it out, how we need to get in there.
Okay.
It's probably like the components that go with the tower.
The box, the big-
Yeah, that kinda stuff.
I assumed that too, but Mindy gives us that definition of it.
Yep, we'll get it.
Alright, Article Five.
Fun, fun.
The fun one, yeah.
First before the table?
Yeah, anything before the table?
I have a one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, five oh four oh nine.
Mm-hmm.
Let me just go to it.
Okay.
I just thought it was like a confusing s- like sentence to me. Unless otherwise expressly specified within this resolution or restricted by an applicable, applicable legal approval, nothing in this resolution shall, shall preclude any structure, lot, or tract from containing more than one authorized principal use and/or accessory use. Like, it's kinda like double neg- like negation, I feel like, and it, like, I, I, what you wanna say is that there can be more than one principal use, right?
Yes.
So, can we just not rephrase that, so that's a bit clearer that that means it?
You haven't taken enough law classes yet.
You say what?
You haven't taken enough law classes yet.
I, I don't know, you cannot, oh-
You need to take more law classes, so you write more words like that.
I, 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 I understand that, but it's, it's so confusing how it's written.
But, uh, I'll defer to our attorney in the room as to the, how you think that verbiage. I'm fine changing it, if we think we need to change it.
Well, how about writing it in the affirmative in that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, a structure, lot, or tract may have more than one principal use or acc- and/or accessory use unless otherwise-
And then use the, the proceeding statement.
Yeah, unless otherwise specifically addressed.
Yep. And that sounds good.
I'm just gonna make my note right in the affirmative, keep, um, including opening sentence, and if I need to reference the audio to what masterful sentence, Mr. Walsh just-
Correct.
I'll, uh-
Please, there we go, alright.
I have the same for the next point, it's kinda similar.
Yep.
Ten?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep, I'll make the same thing.
Alright. Good idea. Anything else prior to the?
Now, the table is-
Tables?
I do have like some general comments about tables, if you wanna talk about it.
Let's start there.
Okay, but is any? Um, I brought this up last time, um, but like, i- is there, is there, is it for a legal standpoint necessary to have these tables split into two sections?
Yeah, because we regulate them two different ways.
Okay, so for a legal standpoint, we need to, okay, that's one. Um, and then also, what can we, uh, not allow in, in, as a use? Cause I know, I mean marijuana cultivation dispensary and processing is one of them. And then is the other one, is sexual oriented business, or is, is, do you still have to allow that?
I think you still technically have to allow them, but you are, wow. I've seen conflicting things over that, over time. I think your s- I think your safest bet is to allow them, but to just heavily restrict them.
Okay.
That's the safest route. Sat through a sex oriental business presentation at OTAs, they stated you must have them allowable somewhere. Yes. Or else they're allowable everywhere, because they'll just sue you and say, you can't let me put it anywhere, so I'm gonna put it here, and you're gonna lose. I've always been told, you have to allow every use at least somewhere. With the exception of the marijuana stuff, that the state has said you can absolutely prohibit, but tha- at that point, it's not even a zoning issue. It's a standalone resolution the board can pass.
And we're saying that sexually oriented businesses are permissible in-
Probably a planned area, planned industrial, I think.
We allow them in- Their conditional uses in the light industrial district.
That seems also like, I mean, we'll, we'll come back to that, but I feel like if you plan it somewhere, do it in a planned area.
Yeah. Trying to think what my rationale there was, because I think I'm just mirroring what's already in the code. If you do it as a planned district, it's gonna be in an administrative action. In which case, the legal recourse for anybody, I think, would be very limited if not existent of a neighbor. Again, I'm not an attorney, so.
So, if you do it in latent and-
Technically, could a board of a, I feel like there's more opportunity if you were a concerned neighbor to possibly appeal it if you went through the BZA. But I don't even know, because that's a condit- I don't know.
Cause I mean, if you do it in the light industrial district, can you even oppose it then? Because then it's allowable, so how-
If they meet all the standards, it would be allowable, but that's the same s- it's the same theory, though, with the development plan. Theoretically, you know, if there was a lot of opposition to it, generally speaking, if it met all the code standards, you would similarly be approving it.
But we might not approve it. If, if there'd be-
No, but the BZA could opt to not necessarily approve it either, if they felt like it didn't meet a condition.
Well, after it, after it, if we had to make a judgment on it, then the BZA cannot make a judgment on it anymore, right?
Correct.
So, if we would say, no, it's not possible, it, they cannot go back to the BZA, so-
No, can't go to the BZA. Um, the board's gonna have the final say on it. I, I guess maybe there was some aspect to it of if it goes in front of you guys, it's definitely go, go to multiple meetings, is that a good thing or a bad thing?
I think people will want to say something about it, I feel like.
Yeah. Trying to thi- I know there's a reason we did it the way we did it. Or, cause that's actually fairly new. We allowed the, they were not allowed anywhere, and when I got, a few years ago, we put that in there to avoid the situation that Mr. Benson alluded to. Um,
We can come back to that.
I'll think about that one.
And I, I have a question.
I'm not saying you're wrong on it.
I have a question that I did not have until this conversation. Um, regarding the marijuana cultivating dispensary and processing.
Mm-hmm.
So, because we have a trustee resolution, we can say that it is not permitted in any area, but what you were saying earlier is that if you don't permit something in some area that gives them the right, maybe that was-
Unless there's a law that said, basically gave us that right.
I mean-
Unless there's a law that expressly gives us that right to not allow it anywhere, which the revised code does. Yes, part of the language of issue two, uh, gave the townships the ability to outright ban them. But this is talking about, not issue two, this is talking about, what, that medical marijuana. Correct. Oh, yeah, that was- Part, part, but part of issue two said that if you have a ban already in place for the medical facilities, for medical marijuana cultivation and selling and processing, that will also count the, the now ones that are included in issue two.
So, it's almost grandfathered, so we're okay by this?
There's, there's still a lot of legal stuff that's unclear with the latest marijuana, recreational marijuana. I just want, OTA covered this last meeting.
Okay.
Or last week.
Yeah, I mean, I never, I, I mean, I went with this as it said, until you just said if it's not permitted everywhere, then it could be permitted everywhere.
With the caveat being that the state law expressly tells us that we can-
Okay, good, cause I would not like that.
Correct, yes. No, we are, we are covered here. Um, when it comes to recreational marijuana, we're basically waiting to see where the dust settles on that. The, the State House has bills out there in terms of how they're gonna address it. And no one really knows exactly how it's gonna go, so we're all sort of in wait-and-see mode on that. But I, I did hear Mr. Benson, the theory that Mr. Benson said about how the prior resolution still applies, but-
Okay, good. Good, good, good.
The courts and the legislature are gonna have to figure all that out.
Dude, can you explain a little bit the difference between C permitted by conditional use and S permitted by specific standards?
Yep.
Similarly-
They're very similar trains of thought. Um, anything that's permitted via conditional use is gonna go in front of the BZA. Um, you can only do conditional uses in the straight zoning districts.
Okay.
So, conditional uses go to the BZA by statute, that's Ohio law. And also, you can only do them in non-planned districts. Um, so for like the uses in the LI and CB, RR, SR districts, it may be a use that you're like, yeah, I could see that going there, but I wanna make sure we have some specific standards that we wanna make sure they have to adhere to, to do it. Then that's when you would make it a conditional use to make them go in front of the BZA, and the BZA is gonna do that step of making sure they've met all those conditions. If it's a planned district, the S is somewhat my terminology I came up with to sort of, but it's gonna function very similarly, whereas, again, I'll use the daycare example. Someone comes in with a daycare, if it's in one of those straight zoning districts, and if it's permitted by conditional use, it's gonna go to the BZA. They're gonna review the exact same daycare standards that you would be reviewing if it was in a planned district and came in front of you.
Yeah.
So, it's just a function of procedure in the type of zoning district.
Makes sense.
All the principal uses up top of the, can we put a legend?
Yeah, I think that was a good idea.
RR equals rural residential, SR equals suburban residential.
Oh, not just use the abbreviations?
Well, no, I wanna use the abbreviations, but I want you to put something else above it.
Oh, like on the first page?
First page.
What is, what is it? We know what those are by looking at it.
Well, they are in five oh one, but if you want me to put it above the table, I can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. That might be helpful.
Put it above the table. I think you got enough room that you can just put, put them there.
And how I envision this table functioning is it'll probably be landscaped. And if it goes out far enough, it may actually have to be on eleven by seventeen, we'll have to see how it looks. But it probably won't look like this. I know this is hard to read.
Well, you can stack-
This is just how the PDF spit it out.
You can do a double column sitting there, you can stack the, the R, the C, the S, the N, and the star in a stack.
Yep.
And do a second set to the su- to the right-hand side. You can set two, those, a double, it's a double column set on the page.
Yep.
Do you want, I'm assuming you just want that at the beginning of each table, you don't wanna see that on every page?
Beginning of each table, I don't think you need to put on each one.
Well, what if you stuck it in the footer? In like eight-point font, so it's just barely there, but-
I'll take a look at it.
I mean, I don't-
But you want it somewhere on that first page?
Somewhere on the first page, if we can do it on every page, it makes it easier if it can go in the footer, but then the, you gotta, you gotta do a section footer. Do a section footer, and I don't know whether or not it would work.
I had something else about-
You could put two, two in. Well, you'd be three, three, I mean, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Yeah, and I can't put it probably in the document footer, because there's already-
There's too much stuff there.
But I could put it as like a footnote below the table. I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
And it will look really weird until we have a clean version, because the way the formatting, the-
Yeah, I was actually surprised it formatted it this way. I thought it was gonna do it.
I mean, I've mentioned this to, to Joe already, but I would also make a note, uh, about Hoover overlay that, um, it takes precedent over all other districts if it, if, um, the use differs from any of the other, uh, zonings. There's only a few, like, occasions where that happens, like, the multiplex is one of them, like, you can have multiplexes in like, um, PRD, for instance, but not if it's under the Hoover overlay. Um, there's a couple of other ones, uh, mobile home is one of them. Um, but it would be good to just also mention it, we, we know, I mean, it's somewhere else in the document, but it just would be good if it's also stated.
I, yeah, I have no issue with that, because it, we talked about it in Article Seven, but if you're looking at this table in the va- in a vacuum, you're not gonna know that.
Yeah.
Um, daycare center, page five dash seven.
Mm-hmm.
Where that is, the very bottom line, but if you go one more page over, it's the different types, in H O D, it's blank. It's supposed to be a carryover from the previous one, but I think the way the line's set up, I just would add it to the-
What I'll probably have to do is waiting to see how all the formatting works out, and then I'll have to go back and-
Page, cut, page.
Yeah, and if I have to do a page cutter, break up the table to fix it, I'll do it.
Yep, yep.
I, I was not gonna go to that level of cleaning it up until we see how this all shook out, but yes, I agree.
And then,
so, for the PRD, I just have also like a general thing, like, the PRD gets a lot of new, um, new uses, but it's like, shouldn't PRD like be, as a principal use, be residential? Like, there's a lot of, like, I'm just afraid that some, some developer comes along and he sees, oh, I can do office or, um, financial institution, you know, and he's like, oh, I'm just gonna put that as my principal use, and then, oh, maybe I'll do some little houses on the side, and then it becomes more like an office kind of, kind of thing, instead of being actually a residential development.
We need to be cognizant of that, because that's not obviously the intent.
Um, so, wouldn't it be better to just have only as a principal use the residential things in a PRD, and then all the rest put them in accessory use?
No, no, did I, I'm looking at Article Nine to see if I cover that. I thought I put in some sort of provision that would limit that. But maybe I thought of it, but didn't write it. I'm looking real quick. Yeah, I'll take a look at that, because that was one of the reasons I started putting in per the development plan, because I didn't wanna see that either. I guess what I was trying to think of is development is very much moving away from the traditional Euclidean residential goes here, industrial goes here, and commercial goes here, and never shall the, any of them cross. I mean, we have sort of this, even though they're technically two different developments. Like, if the entrance to Highland Lakes off of State Street, you've got the little commercial building with the bank and the, and the laundry, and then you got the neighborhood behind it. And to me, it's like, well, why wouldn't that be, why would we not want that? If it's, as long as it's a neighborhood style use, and it's, we can regulate the size and stuff through the development plan regulations, why would we wanna not have maybe some of those amenities? And I feel like that's, and again, because it's a development plan, it's gonna come in front of this group, and if the group says, well, you know, I don't think that use in that location, I'm, I'm not, I'm not liking it, then we can have those conversations with the developer. Um, I knew this would probably be a point of discussion that we're gonna have to probably noodle on a little bit, because it is a unique sort of, it, it is a change from how we do, I'm not gonna lie, it's, it's different. Um, but that's the thought process. Mixed uses have become more prevalent. We don't have a traditional mixed-use zoning district. So, this was my attempt to somewhat allow for some of that, should anyone wanna do it, but still try to keep tabs on it. Um, I don't wanna read through all Article Nine in depth, but I, I really thought I had something in here about like percentages or-
Alright, we're gonna cover, cover nine in the next meeting, so why don't we mark that as a question?
I'll write down, just as a general comment, look into this.
My only thing was, should we just not make it all accessory then? Cause then you don't have that issue, that's all what I, I mean-
If it's accessory, it has to be accessory to, to use on the same property.
Well, I mean, it's this accessory to the residential use, so. I mean, it's like, it's a market for the people who live there, or-
I can't use accessory use probably in that. I get what you're saying, like in a big picture, yeah, I, I, I agree with what you're saying. It just comes down to, I can't use accessory use in that way, because it, I think there's unintended consequences of how that impacts actual accessory uses, because now you're saying, well, I'm on a different lot, my accessory use is here, but my- actual accessory uses, because now you're saying, well, I'm on a different lot, my accessory use is here, but my house is over here. I can't, I don't want that situation, because, trust me, we have people that look at property like, oh, I live in other township, but I wanna buy this property just so I can build this, this residential property and build this big barn to store my cars in. It's like, Genoa does not want to be the off-site storage capital of central Ohio where everyone just buys these lots and builds these barns to store their cars in. So that's one of the reasons we say the accessory use has to be on the same property as the principal use, when we're talking on a lot basis to prevent that kind of stuff from happening. I'll look into it, though.
Five dash eight, emergency services private.
Hold on, sorry, I'm, apologies, I just need to make that note real quick. Okay, I'm sorry, five dash eight?
Five dash eight. Emergency services private, we've got no's in PRD. I just wonder why we have no's in PRD.
Just because we're fine with it if it's Delaware County or Genoa Township, but if it's David's ambulance service, do you want that in PRD? We have to allow.
Have to have governmental ones.
But. Do you want at the beginning, use my Highland Lakes example, do you want a private ambulance service making all that noise if you don't necessarily have to at the front of a PRD?
No.
That's the thought process.
I was just thinking if we had, let's say a PRD, a community went in place that was elderly and they had their own ambulance or cart or.
See, I would consider that more as like just an accessory or incidental function of like the nursing home or something. But, but, so I was thinking with the example I had, that some private ambulatory service. Or transport service or.
Isn't that a commercial, isn't that commercial then, or?
Yeah, that's why it's private.
Qualify as emergency services. Alright, nevermind, then no.
No, that's why we have these discussions, though, it's good.
You think a one goes in and then they have their own ambulance and.
Like if Faradine had their own. I, I would probably view that as, that's just part of their operation, it's not a cer- it's not like they're driving off-site to a Faradine to start picking up people over the township. If they just use it internally, that I would view as something separate.
Okay, so I'm not excluding that use then by doing that?
I don't think so.
And that's, that's all I had presenting as a question.
It's not the principal use of Faradine Commons, it's, it's a, it may not even be accessory, it's just an incidental service they provide at that point.
Are we doing the whole table now, or we're just going over all the things we wanna see changed in the table?
Well, that would be all of five.
No, I, I know. But you jumped to like E, like I have a whole bunch of them.
Speak up, Sebastian, I didn't, sorry, I thought we were already on that, alright, what do you have?
Agri, agritourism and farm market. I mean, it's, it's a farm-related use, so it's, I feel like it needs to be possible in the rural residential district. I mean, because I mean, if you, like, that's where our farm would be, I mean, that seems, like, I, I know we don't have many left, but if there would one still come, that's where it would be.
Sure, so my, here's my theory on that. They are, if they meet the state's exemption, they're gonna be allowed, essentially. And again, this is a little bit of, I've just turned around to prevent a loophole, where someone meets the definition of farm market, but it's not exempt under the revised code.
We had one of those.
And it's a hyper mart, like, let's say it's like some hyper market size, do we really want that in a rural residential district? Some of it's just like, I can't think of how that would happen, but I just wouldn't wanna see that happen.
Part of the issue with this agritourism, and we find this on the Board of Building Appeals, is that people are taking, the property owners are taking these barns and they're calling it agritourism, they throw a bunch of cases of wine.
Yep.
Or, or bales of straw and hay. And they call it agritourism, but it's really a wedding venue.
Okay, yeah.
And so it's really a commercial operation or an assembly space.
Yeah.
So.
So especially if the law changes and works in our favor, I wanna make sure we're covered.
But, like, why then allow it in the PRD, I, I, like, for me, like, don't allow it in there then either.
Well, because again, you get to control that. If it's a straight district, it's purely administrative, the commission, the trustees have no say in it. If it's part of the development plan, you have a lot more ability to critique it and say, you know, we could put provisions in there, like, we talked about size restrictions and commercial uses, you know, that kind of stuff could come into play. That kind of stuff can't really happen unless it was a conditional use, isn't gonna fly so much, so I was basically just trying to prevent any slip-through-the-crack, non-residential development of a size or nature that we would not want in those residential districts. If it's exempt, then they're gonna be able to do it. And we'll allow it, obviously. So that, that was my fear, of someone somehow qualify, not being exempt, but qualifying for that definition, and now we get something in the area we don't want.
And for farm markets, I mean, that's something overall, so, I, I just feel like, in our case, in our township, our commercial district and our industrial district overlaps a lot, and I feel like we need to try to differentiate these two a bit, and that's also like why, why let a farm market also be in the industrial district?
Well, there's a, we're working under the theory now of like, and I'm not gonna say it's a per- we're perfectly executing it, we're very much trying to work under the pyramid theory now where if something's okay in commercial, why would you not allow it in industrial, because industrial is your most intense zoning district, right? Commercial's usually a step up where it's not usually quite as intense, you're not gonna have things that are quite as dirty. But let the market dictate how they want the land to be used, if the market around here is, you've got industrial land, but most people are not interested in traditional industrial, they wanna do stuff that would traditionally be more commercial, why would we not want that? So, that's the theory. There's very much a push and plating circles to get rid of, away from the very Euclidean induc- again, the industrial, commercial, residential distinction, those lines are very much being blended to provide for communities that are more organic and flexible long-term, because the problem with Euclidean zoning is you really start to tie yourself into, into, into binds, and you're not flexible enough to adjust to when uses change, market changes, so. Industrial is basically, unless we have a reason, most uses are gonna be allowed there that are non-residential in nature, and then as you go up the pyramid, we're gonna come more and more strict as we get up to residential districts.
The problem that I have with that is that once at some point this runs out, like, all these industrials, they get filled with other stuff that are not industrial anymore, and there is someone who wants, or, or someone just rezones another an, another area for like light industrial, because at that point of time, you can do a farm market there, it comes in front of the board, we say, oh, it's a farm market, it's fine, but at that point, it is zoned light industrial, because it goes through the rezoning process, it's a farm market, but what comes next? You create a new zone where it's light industrial, and then maybe you have something that you don't want, so I just feel like.
Which is why we always say when the rezonings come through, don't think about the use that they're proposing now. Think about all the other uses that are gonna come with it, so the township has the ability to think about that when they have the rezoning decision in front of them of, and I've heard that, I'm, I actually, on regional planning, I recommended denial and a rezoning on that basis the other, the, last month, where it was self-storage, and they said, oh, well, we'll restrict ourselves to self-storage. And the point was made of, yeah, but if you go away, now this is an industrial zone property, and any of those other uses could go in there, so the township still has that control, so if we have that concern, my recommendation would be in that scenario, don't approve the rezoning, because it could be something else.
I know, but they're just gonna say, what, what the normal argument is, they're gonna say like, oh, but look, I qualify on all these things, it says I can have this use, my building is, is small enough, it, there is nothing, like, I don't need divergences, so like, it's gonna be hard to like.
And that's where your comprehensive plan is really important, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Well, I'm just gonna say, like, our, our argument is gonna be like, oh, but the future, and is that a good argument to make in front of someone who actually wants to build that farm market?
Well, hopefully.
But if you're allowing it across multiple zoning districts, you're not have to rezonate. They don't have to qualify for a rezoning, which then qualifies us to make that decision, if they're gone, then, but you are to qualify under this, so no rezoning is needed.
But I mean, let's say it's rural.
It's industrial.
Well, yeah, but let's say it's rural residential, and, okay, we're all fine with a farm market in a space that, that is rural residential, it's on a nice corner. But then at that point, they, they choose the designation industrial, instead of like, if we don't have.
Apply for a rezoning.
Yeah, they, they will have to apply for a rezoning.
But they already are allowed to do farm market in the RR, why would we rezonate if they were?
Well, they're, well, they're, they're not per se, because I mean, only if they qualify, but.
Well, but they are, they're exempt, they're.
Well, I mean, you're, you're right, I mean, farm market is maybe not the best example, there's other examples that will cover this case.
Where they were trying to say that, but they didn't meet the definition.
It's hard to think of the future, instead of like having the industrial district be more industrial, then you don't have that that fear that is something that you would be okay with as a, like, in a commercial business district that eventually could become an industrial.
I, I understand why you're thinking that way, I'm thinking of the other way, is that we're allowing it in the multiples, so they don't, we aren't restricted down the road because they have to rezonate, they're already in this other zone.
No, no, I, I, I understand it, it's, it's, my concern is just when someone does want to rezone, it looks favorable, we rezon, and then it might become something else, but.
But they wanted to use the same cha- same use? They wanna rezon, but have the same use?
No, no, I mean, it's a farm market, and then someone says, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm just gonna take a farm market down, I'm gonna store junk cars.
It's gonna be a factor, I mean, yeah, something.
As long as it's an industrial, it's fine.
So my rec- again, my recommendation would be in that situation, if it's not consistent with your comprehensive plan, deny the rezoning request. Because if your comp pla- so that's where, that's where the true power of the comprehensive plan is, we focus so much on what the density numbers are in the comprehensive plan. But the comprehensive plan's really true power is, it can be your foundation for making rezoning decisions regarding whether this property should be residential or industrial. If your comp plan says, if someone comes in and wants to do RR to LI, and your comp plan says, we recommend that the state RR, the township, I think, has a very good argument at that point to deny the request based on the recommendation of the comp plan. Where it gets tricky is when you start talking about dense, more hypers, not hyperspecific, more specific regulations like density. That's when you gotta be careful, but the comp plan is meant to fill that void that the resolution can anticipate or regulate, which is what should the future land use be? Because the resolution is the now, the comp plan is the future. So that's where the value is in terms of, now, if the township likes the proposal, the township A could go against its own comp plan, usually, and you're allowed to do that as long as you say, we're going against our comp plan for these reasons. Or B, there's always the option of the township to tell the applicant, we like this, but we need to make some changes on our end for this to work, let us go through that process, and then we'll, we'll deal with it, or you could run them simultaneously, all at the same time, there, there's ways around that, so I get the concern, but again, I think the township's gonna have that vote there. So if the concern was, well, we like the farm market, but we don't like any of the other uses, if it's not consistent with your comprehensive plan, I, I, in that hypothetical situation, I feel like you would be within your right to recommend denial or vote on the, to deny it.
Dwelling live-work. To me, it could be allowed in RR and SR under. It's called dwelling live-work. Just the first page, the first of the table.
Dwelling live-work?
Dwelling comma live-work.
Yeah, live-work, okay.
I could see this being in SR and RR. I also find it's a little bit strange that it isn't the commercial business district and the PCD, because then you start mixing the, I can understand that we mix it up in a PRD situation, but it seems kinda weird if we're gonna let, let people residences be, be part of that planned, that planned commercial district and, and commercial district.
Yeah, I guess I didn't wanna pu- I didn't wanna push the envelope too much of introducing new commercial uses into the RR and SR districts. Again, because the zoning commission, the trustees are not gonna be reviewing any of that, so unless we make a conditional use, it would purely be administrative, so. I didn't wanna push that envelope too much. Again, the, the thought process behind putting them in CB and PCD is just trying to encourage, again, since we don't have a mixed-use district, to try to provide for that angle. And since the first floor of these traditionally would be the commercial, that's why I thought maybe it would make some more sense, I mean, if, if we don't wanna allow them, we don't wanna allow them. And again, repeating record, it's trying to get away from that very commercials, commercial, and never shall there be residential in it, that's the playing world is moving in a different direction, we don't necessarily have to follow the playing world to be, uh, you know, that said, but it's just trying to introduce some more flexibility, you know, for those developers. Not just for the developers, for the property owner, or whomever we're, we're dealing with.
I mean, dwelling live-work is that I live there, and it's my job, is it there at the same place, or is it, I have a.
You gotta go back and look at the definition, because that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
The duplex, triplex, quadplex.
So is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, and then there's other definitions, so in the new definition section, that's what applies there, so we definitely don't want it.
It's essentially, imagine you're real estate agent, attorney, someone of that kind of nature that tend to be self-employed or have a very small business, or it's just them, they theoretically have their office on the first floor, and then they live above it.
So it is your own place, right?
I'd have to look back, but yeah, I mean, yeah, you live there. It's your house, it's, that's the theory.
Your house, your job.
You're living above your business, basically.
That's why I would be okay with it in SR or RR.
I've not defined it that, maybe I didn't define it well enough.
I find it because.
That's the theory.
Because of that, that I, then I would find it weird in a commercial business district, because then you almost get a house in there with part of it being a livable space.
Well, that'd be, that'd be like Uptown Westerville, where you have the business.
No, no, I, I, I know, but I mean, knowing where our commercial biz- district is, you know, it, it just seems kinda weird to s- to see like some kinda house slash.
Usually, they're not gonna look like houses, usually, they're gonna look like townhomes, or they're gonna look like commercial buildings with the individual residential units above. I mean, it could be a standalone structure, I'm not gonna say it never could happen. We do specify in the definition that that ties the business and the resident of that dwelling together, you can't like rent out your ba- your first floor to Subway, but then you live above and you're just pulling rent from Subway or something.
Different than multiplex kind of situations. Are you okay with changing any of that, or like, what are your opinions on that?
Like I said, I didn't wanna push too hard on changing RR and SR and introducing too many non-residential uses to those districts, I felt like we would get a lot of pushback on that. Again, people living in the commercial areas.
I'm just thinking like an architect, for instance, and they have their office part of their home, I mean, I don't see why.
Yeah, but we already have that.
Well, yeah.
We have home occupation.
Home occupation is in there, I, I know, but
there's a lot of terms I.
This is bigger than a home occupation.
Let's put a star on that one.
Okay.
Come back to that. I think we need to think about that a little bit differently.
Okay. It's, it's just, it's also very similar to that home occupation, so it's kinda. I got multifamily building, all of them, I don't know why I had that. First of all, why is it necessary to have so many subcategories if we're allowed only in one zoning district, PRD with conservation? Is it necessary to have all these subcategories, is basically the question?
Maybe, maybe not, I feel like I'm trying to set it up where if we ever have dist- different districts that do other things, we've already got sort of the structure in place where we don't have to go back and put those uses in. So sometimes it's me setting things up of, not that I have like a grand scheme of plans of down the road of, oh, then I'm gonna do this, but sometimes I like to structure things in a way where we have the flexibility to do things diff- if we wanted to do something else, we could without having to totally re-change how we've already put it all together.
Amusement arcade, I'm just questioning if that would be a nuisance to people, and if we shouldn't put that only in a planned district?
Like a, I'm just thinking of like the old, you don't really see them anymore, but the old, you know, where you go to play Pac-Man.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, but I mean, it brings a lot of kids, I don't know, I mean, some things are more sensible, but it could potentially draw a crowd, I mean, depending who, what kind of establishment it is.
I, I guess I don't see it any different than a store that's selling stuff that kids like to buy.
Okay. Same thing, animal shelters, should we have that in the light industrial district, because that's also seems something that might be of nuisance to. I'm just saying, like, if it's in a planned district, we, it will come in front of us, and then I feel like if people would know they were. I'm just saying like if it's in a planned district, we, it will come in front of us and then I feel like if people would know there was gonna be an animal shelter. Might, they might have concerns about noise and things like that.
Well, and that's why it's a conditional use. So the same standards that we were gonna use, the BZA is gonna use. I guess the also theory is so many of our PID and LI district parcels are like right next to each other, so. There were certain scenarios where maybe I only wanted it in PID or LI. But the, in other uses.
Harlan Township just doubled, it's the last year or two years ago.
Yeah, I think I sort of vaguely remember that.
Maybe been three or four years ago, but. Yeah, I guess I'm, I agree with Sebastian to the extent that we wanna keep those in a commercial or industrial area, not. Potentially in a rural residential or.
Yeah, we don't have.
I don't think it, I don't think it is, but. I mean, I don't think it is in a residential, but I, I just always think like if it's planned, then it comes in front of us.
Yeah, I, I just, I guess, I feel like the BZA is, you know, just, you know, equally like the CC, it's gonna be the same process. There's gonna be public notice, the signs are gonna go out. I mean, you're just, you're just talking about it goes in front of a different board. I wanna be careful. We don't wanna take too much stuff off the BZA, cause then it starts to sound like, well, we don't trust the BZA. Like there's, I, I feel like we're saying we're okay with it in light industrial district, cause it's a non-residential district. But by fact that it's a straight district, it just has to go to the BZA as opposed to go into the.
I mean, the only problem is that the BZA does allow it, there is nothing you can do about it, right? I mean, it's like.
No, you can, I mean, if you allow it, there's nothing really anyone can do unless they have grounds to file an appeal or scorces.
In front of the trustees, there's a lot more ways that people can.
I mean, the trustees could overrule the zoning commission, but.
I mean.
I, I just wanna be careful that we say, well, because we want, because the trustees don't vote on it, we don't want the BZA to get anything. Like that's, I don't think that's gonna be a theory we wanna work with.
I don't think you should, you shouldn't do that either. I'm not saying that, but the ones that might be of nuisance, that's just what I was thinking.
Yeah, it's, they're tricky, for sure. It's also what, what is the characteristic of the light district versus the planned district? In some ways, I view the pla- I guess, I view the planned districts as where we would want the more desirable industrial uses. And the light industrial district, I guess, and I guess this sort of answers the question about the sexually oriented businesses. Where the not so desirable maybe industrial uses would be left over and we're trying to incentivize people going to the planned districts. So if people switch their properties to planned districts, it's going to limit opportunities for those not so desirable uses. Because the number of light industrial properties will shrink over time, while as the number of planned industrial properties are gonna grow over time. So if you encourage people to go to PID because the code is flexible and the use list is nice. You're going to by default, limit those opportunities for those undesirable uses. That was sort of really the word.
But that's my, that's my argument too. If you just don't allow it and if you only allow it in a planned district, that's the same thing.
Well, no, because we have more planned industrial dis- lots than we're gonna have in, over time, we're gonna have more planned industrial lots. So if you allow it in the PID, you're actually expanding the area where it possibly could be. Whereas as more properties go to PID, if those uses are only allowable in LI, you're actually reducing the number of lots that could qualify for that use.
It is, but we can say like, hey, this sexual oriented business, sorry, I don't think you qualify. I, I think the public, we, we hear the public and the public says, no, we really don't want this next door.
Allow it in PID, you're not gonna be able to say that. Just like you, if you allow it in LI.
You can allow it there, but I mean, you still make, at the end of the day, you, you still, it's still a public debate, the public, we hear the public and.
Well, the public's gonna have that debate with the BZA just as easy as they're gonna have with the CC and the trustees.
I know, I just, I just always feel like there was always a backup when the trustees also review it again. That's also just how I.
Yeah, but the trustee's decision is subject to appeals and, I mean, the cor- you're gonna end up in the same place, one way or the other. If it's an administrative hearing with the trustees though, there's not gonna be any referendum and our PIDs are not subject to referendum, because that's how we have them structured. You don't rezone to PID, you pull down the cloud and you just do the one step administrative process. So there's never gonna be this, the right to referendum. So I think that's. Regardless of whether you go conditional use or whether you go under the PID. Again, my theory was, we're gonna try to push most people to utilizing their plant, their properties as PID. Because the zoning commission, the trustees can control them, but the same degree, as more properties come to PID, the less will be in light industrial, so. You're sort of in a way reducing the opportunities for those less desirable uses to come into the township, because you're, the number of properties. Zoned LI are gonna be reduced. So you're. Sometimes you gotta a little get creative with zoning and those techniques of, you know. Well, we can't necessarily just say you can't do it, period, but we are going to try to, you know, still work it so. We still get the kind of community we, we want. So that's the theory. You, you wanna be careful that. I understand you want stuff to go in front of the zoning commission and the trustees, but there's a little bit of strategy that comes into play here of how you execute it can actually. You can actually get where you want to be by not allowing it in the PID as opposed to allowing it in the PID, if that makes sense.
So let's say, um, the sexual orientated business gets denied by the BZA. What can the applicant still do?
They can go to court just like they could.
They can still go to court even with.
It's, that's why I said you end up in the same spot either way. Because if the BZA denies it and the applicant doesn't like it, they'll take you to court. If the trustees deny it and the applicant doesn't like it, they take you to court.
Oh, with the difference that once the BZA says yes, you cannot do anything?
But it, once the trustees say yes, you can't do anything.
There is no referendum?
Not on an administrative action in the PID. Which again, if someone, say you had a rural residential property and someone wanted to rezone to light industrial. For a sexually oriented business, that would be subject to referendum.
Um, because of, yep.
Because you're changing the zoning, but if the zoning is already there. You can only pull out, with, with the way our PIDs work, it's only an administrative action. There's no, the legislative action of PID. Got addressed when we created the PID and made it a, a cloud overlay, pull it down district. So again, you get into the hyper technicalities of how this all functions.
Yeah, well, let's move on to another one. Bed and breakfasts.
Bed and breakfast, yes.
Do you have this conditionally in RR and SR? Is that what it is?
I gotta find it.
Additional RR and SR, yes.
Yeah, I mean, for, I, I looked a little bit further for that too, because like, it, it just strange like how you formulate where a bed and breakfast can be later on. Because like you say, it needs to be next to a, um, a non-resi- it, it needs to, it needs to be in a residential district that abuts another. A, a non-residential district, which is, I find strange, because I can see people having part of like, having half of their house. That they wanna have a bed and breakfast in and have people, host people for, for money, obviously, but. Like I don't see why we wouldn't allow that in, like in any residential area. The only difference that I, that I see is like. I just don't wanna have, um, the problem that you like having in downtown in German Village where people buy up whole houses. And keep renting them as an Airbnb, like as a BNB for like an extended period of time. Cause then you create something else where, um. Where basically it's, it's a rental, basically, and you drive up housing prices because, I mean, I'm not saying that this will happen here per se, but I mean, it could be, it's nice to. To be close to the water and, um, and rent, rent, rent a house like that out, but I would definitely put in, um. I would kind of link a bed and breakfast with a residence, that's what I'm saying. Like, you, a bed and breakfast can only take place. When you also live there and I, I, I think the definition of that bed and breakfast is not very clear. Cause it, it seems more almost like a hotel or something or a motel, um, definition.
Well, we do call out vacation rentals separately as separate uses to deal with that whole Airbnb issue. And that's assuming the state doesn't totally just take our way, our ability to regulate Airbnb and other similar types of.
But my point is like someone can say, someone else can say, no, it's a, it's a, it's a bed and breakfast, it's not a vacation rental.
Well, I'm looking, I'd have to look back at how I made the dis- distinguished in the definitions between the two. I tried to make sure they were two different uses, but maybe I didn't achieve that goal.
Let's see here. Between bed and breakfast and what, Joe?
Like a vacation rental or hotel motel or something?
What do we call, what would be the definition name of a rental prop- would be rental property?
He's got vacation rental.
It's like, it's like short term rental then technically, but I don't know if it's.
Yeah, the definition of bed and breakfast probably could use some, some work, cause it basically reads like a hotel.
All I'm saying is it should more, it should more read as you have a house, you have a residence and part of that residence or, I don't know, a barn or a building, you rent that out. And you also live there. I think that needs to be definitely, it's important, cause otherwise you create that vacation, like vacation rental kind of. Stuff that you have like in German Village where like, like half of these houses get bought up, they put a special lock on it, every day there's someone else in these places. And the housing prices go up.
Well, that's why if you qualify as a vacation rental, that's why I made it a different use.
I mean, maybe it should be accessory use. I mean, that's fine, we need to, but. It's accessory to a residence.
I'll do some, I'll, I'll think about, I, um, I'll look into it a little bit more, cause I understand the concern.
Cause I don't think.
And I agree, the definition I need to look at again.
I mean, I would put it maybe in accessory, that's what I might suggest.
My thought process was I guess we just have some, you know, being on with Hoover specifically. And you know, people think of bed and breakfast, they think sort of that, the imagery they get is that sort of quaint New England-y, you know? Vibe from it. And if, and I feel like that might be a sensible use for a property that's next to a non-residential zone property. It's sort of a transitional use where it's not gonna be, you know, an intense gas station, but it's not, you know. It's not a single family home, it's sort of that tweener area, where it might be a little bit of a gentler transition between one area to the other. And I tried to restrict it, so we didn't have them out in the middle of areas that were just solely residential, so it's not to be. Too out of place. But I do agree, the definition needs to be looked at, um. To make sure it is what we want that kind of used to be. So I guess, how's the rest of the commission feeling? Is there a direction you want me to get in or is this maybe we need to put a pin in it and have a little bit more thought and discussion about it?
Let's redo the definition first and then discuss it.
And, I mean, and probably what, what is it, the, the description later, what is it in article nine or where is it? Describe the whole description of it?
The condit- the standards?
Yeah, the standards of it, cause I still find it weird that it needs to be next to a non-commercial district, like.
Well, my theory was you wouldn't want a commercial use out in the middle of a residential subdivision, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like make it accessory to someone living there, cause then it's part, like, it's not just a house by itself. Cause then it immediately is a vacation rental, so it distinguishes from vacation rentals.
I guess I'm, maybe I'm not seeing, I'm, I'm thinking of even if it was accessory to a residence, you still have got a very much non-residential functioning property in the middle of a subdivision, whereas. This is where it, there's gonna be very few areas where you actually could do them, because.
But I'm not against this, that's, that's my whole point. Like, I, I don't think that's a high impact thing. I mean, it's basically like a house looks like a house if someone else lives in there or not. But I think it should be in combination with a residence, that's what I'm saying. Like it shouldn't be like, hey. This rich guy buys all these houses, not, not next to the water and just keeps renting them out as an Airbnb. That's just what I wanna make sure that wouldn't happen.
And that'd be my concern, and that's where I think that being next to residential or non-residential zoning districts helps control that to make sure they don't proliferate all the, everywhere.
There is not, there is gonna be none, that's just, then you basically say, I, you can barely go anywhere. Then you just say like, oh, bed and breakfast now, we're just gonna, not really gonna allow it here. And that's, I, I think you should allow it, cause there, there, I know there is people doing this right now, so it's kind of weird.
Well, the Airbnb, so what the Airbnbs are, it's, it's sort of messy, cause the state has not really done a great job of. There isn't a lot of guidance out there on how township should be handling these Airbnbs. I don't know how these lake communities are handling. I'm sure they deal with it way more than we do. But I also know there's a footage at the state house to take away our ability to regulate vacation rentals altogether. I think they're even looking at trying to tell the cities they can't do it, but there is that concern about the housing, the impact on the housing market, and that's a very valid concern. So yeah, I think I need to look at the definition and I'll noodle a little bit about Sebastian's points and I guess if there's any other feedback and. I mean, it's ultimately not my decision, it's gonna be what you guys wanna do.
What do you guys think? Like, should, should it be possible in a residential district as long as it's in combination with a residence or? Like, I just don't see the point of saying like, oh, it can only be neck, if your property is next to a non-residential area. I mean, it's not like it's gonna be like cars driving in and out. I mean, it's just like a normal kind of day thing.
I don't think most people want a VRBO or a bed and breakfast next door. Now, I don't know what the rights of the homeowner are, but. I would think most people in the, in the typical house in this township want a VRBO next door.
But it's not, it's not the whole house, it's not the BNB, that's what I'm saying. Like, it's someone living there. He has two rooms and he hosts these people for money. That's technically what a bed and breakfast is. It's a bed, can you get breakfast in the morning?
Limitation on renting a house out? There's not, is there? I mean, like.
We don't really go actively after the vacation rentals right now. I, I know they're out there. We don't, we have historically not really gone after them unless it's been like abundantly clear, this is not a residence at all. I mean, actually, we have not gone after them, but we, the thought process always would be, if we did, it needed to be like crystal clear that this was not up, this wasn't a house at all. It was clearly just a commercial venture. We ba- when people call and ask the question, we always say, well, we do define what a hotel is. So if you're running, and if you look at the definition of hotel, we say, if you're operating and if you're doing that. You are a hotel and a hotel is not a permitted use in a residential zoning district, so. The question is, if that's what you wanna do, we're gonna say, if you meet the definition of hotel under the code, no, you can't do it. And we sort of leave it up to them to, to parse all of that out on their end. But because there has been a lot of strong, clear zoning language, at least not that I've seen for townships. On vacation rentals, at least not in this area. Like I said, the lake communities may be a little bit different. We haven't really pushed the issue and again, since the state was looking at taking that right away at some point, we also have not pushed the issue, but. That's also why I make the distinction of what a, a bed and breakfast, which is I basically, I view it as a small hotel, just in a more quaint setting. As opposed to a vacation rental, which to me is a different animal.
I think the difference between, just my interpretation, the difference between a bed and breakfast versus an Airbnb is, in the bed and breakfast, the owner lives there.
Yeah.
They, they are occupying the premises and inviting somebody for cat, for compensation to come in.
Yes.
And stay there versus potentially an Airbnb where it is nothing more than a commercial venture.
Basically a short term rental from a whole house, which mostly it is. It, it, it's a hotel, basically, I mean, like.
Yeah, yeah, that's why it is. That's, that's what we tell people. I mean, basically if you're running it out for a period less than thirty days, you're operating a hotel.
Yeah, but I, that's indeed what I see too as a difference. You live there and you have guests that pay for you and, and you provide them breakfast. That's what technically what it always has been. So I would just like, I, I just find these standards strange and the definition strange, that's just what I'm saying. And I feel like it should be allowed in RR, SR situation, maybe PRD, but I don't know. Cause it's a little impact in that case, cause there is someone there.
Well, you're still having transient individuals coming into.
I'll make it limited to an amount of people that can stay.
Yeah, but you're still.
Isn't that the definition of being conditional?
The problem is that it is unconditional, but the problem is in his standards, and I, that's why I say like, his standard basically say, you can barely do it anywhere, because his standard is, it needs to be to a. It needs to be next to a non-residential district, like it needs to, but like, I can only do it if my property. It's, it's further in the.
In article seventeen, if you look at the conditional use standards for bed and breakfast, that's one of the standards.
And, and that is why I'm like, why even, like, just either allow it or, or change that.
Let's move on to something else, cause we're, we're not even to seventeen yet and that's, that's fine. All right, put a pin in that. You're gonna look at the definition of.
I'm gonna look at the definition, cause I think first and foremost, that definition we need to look, I need to look at.
That's fine. All right.
Brewery, do we need all the different types again? Um, I just wouldn't make a distinction between a brewery with, with a taproom. And then maybe the breweries, like maybe you can do mac, macro and micro brewery without a taproom. Like, it just, there just seems a, a lot of. Like it just, there just seems a, a lot of. A lot of these.
Those were the industry nomenclature, so that's what I used. Like I said, if you want to merge some of them together. You know, we certainly can.
Or you want to merge together?
I would just all do the, the two brew pubs at least together, but, I mean, that's me, but.
I guess I was looking at micro, it's going to be a smaller operation, we might be more okay with that than a macro where you might want to more heavily restrict where. Someone producing that volume and, and traffic basically, um, transport, uh. Loading and unloading traff- you know, the transportation of the product.
Standard language and that's what that was.
So that's, that makes sense.
All those different variations.
That's, in my research, that's what it was.
Okay.
This is also just something small, boarding house is not alphabetical. It should be after biomass energy.
You're, yeah. Yeah, you're absolutely right. Take care of that. I'm sorry, so where was the brewery discussion, where did that land?
I think.
Nothing.
Okay.
Just keep it as is.
Got it.
Just looking here because there's a few things. Community center, non-residential. This seems strange to have, since it's a non-residential purpose, to have it in the residential district. It's a conditional use, but.
Look back at how I defined it so I can make sure we're talking.
Does that mean people don't live in the community center?
Well, it's, it's.
Basically it means it's a community center, but it's not exclusive to just the people that live in that neighborhood. That was. So like we can define community centers as a structure in which members of a, of a defined community. Gather for all these different purposes. Does not contain a dwelling. A resident, a residential one is a type, type of community center exclusively utilized by residents of a specified residential complex or neighborhood. So, but a non-residential one could, maybe it's not necessarily, the community isn't necessarily considered the people who live in that neighborhood, it's a. Religious isn't a good example because now you're talking about a religious establishment, but. Think of an ethnic community. Something like that.
Is it that the word potentially is confusing when you say non-residential? Do you immediately think it's like people living in it versus people not versus non-resident controlled or something?
I'm just saying like I live next to someone who's going to put something like this up there, but it's totally for a totally different community than. My, I mean, my community and you will have a lot of traffic of. People who don't even live there. That would be my concern.
I guess I viewed it as basically sort of like a church, only it's just not got the religious aspect to it, it's.
Like a clubhouse almost.
Yeah, like I'm thinking like a, a community center for, um. Like an ethnicity or something, basically, kind of, you know, cultural. Background without the religious component. I mean, if we want to make regulations, that's, I'm not going to fight back on. I think PRD maybe makes sense, but if we want to say no on community center, but that was my theory is basically it's. They function like a church, but it's just not, it just doesn't have the religious component to it. So if someone wanted to build something that looked, that, that looked exactly like a church, it just didn't happen to be a religious building, it just happened to be centered around some other communal. Identity. Is that really different than a church?
What if it's thirty-six feet tall?
Non-residential height. Religious or non-religious, if it's still generating traffic, its, its impacts are generally the same.
My thing was only that it, it would not be per se for the people living around it, even if it says. Community center, it might be for a community that's.
Well, religious establishments aren't for people who live.
I mean, in general, that's what they try to draw out people around them, I mean.
I don't know, I, I think Genoa Baptist has a pretty raw eyed pool of people, I don't think it's just people within the, you know, Genoa that go there.
I mean, it's all, yeah, I mean, community is broad, so it's not per se religion.
And again, that's why we have these standards of making sure that. You know, and, and that's why this table's hard to look at in a vacuum because. You have to look at the definitions and you have to look at article seventeen, if there's these standards to, to really get the full picture of everything that's going on. So some of these, you might just have to put a pin in and then go through that exercise of looking at the definition, looking at the table and then looking at the standards to see if we think it all works well together. So that sounds like one we might want to put a pin in.
What else? Sorry, I'm just looking for somewhere where you answer kind of with the Cs and the Ss. Anyone else have one?
I'm through mine. Is it the big things that stuck out? So, because I knew we were going to be doing, go back through this thing later. Again, once we get through the rest of the articles.
Yeah, and I think understanding those standards will help inform you of making those decisions on where you think these uses are and are not going to be appropriate. But we had to start somewhere.
Back to this after we conclude.
Do you have anything else we want to really hit on before we? Cause we need to get through seventeen to. Come back to this. I said we've got to get through article seventeen to come back to this.
No, I understand that, I understand that, yeah, I'm, I have the sexual oriented business, we already kind of had it about. Something about vacation rental and complex. Yeah, it's kind of the same conversation. Yeah, I think I'm pretty much.
Major use issues we need to put a pin on are sort of this whole concept of the bed and breakfast and the vacation rentals and where we're going to allow them and how that's all going to work, so, yeah, I, I think that's. And I'm not surprised by that, I figured that would be.
All right.
Items for discussion.
So, next meeting we've got.
The continued, um, meeting for the Northgate project that just continued tonight. You'll have the Giamarcos expansion application. We did not receive anything else, so you'll have two applications on that agenda.
All right, so article six is RR. Seven is overlay. R and PRD and ten is reserved at this point.
I would say a lot of the stuff, it starts with the zoning districts, you're going to see the same changes repeated.
Yep.
There might, there's, there are unique changes here and there based on the districts, but I think the review. In some ways it'll be easier because some of the changes are just the same change over and over in each district. There might be some very modification of the wording.
Was a lot, got rid of it.
Yeah.
It's a lot shorter, so.
Well, if we get through. Well, I mean, this might be a big thing to bite off, but if we get through fifteen, which is all the districts, before we get into general development standards and the other uses.
You can always set it as a goal. You can always just set it as a goal, right?
Set it as a goal if we, and we'll have a drop dead time at the end of the night, so.
Okay, so you want article six through fifteen?
Six through fifteen. Cause I don't think there's many, I don't think there's that many.
A lot got erased from those, so.
A lot that's just gone in some of that stuff because it got incorporated into the other things, so.
Yeah, a lot that's gone or a lot that just got shuffled around for organizational purposes.
All right, we have anything else that is for the good of our order, wait, I don't know, I gotta get through the script here. Any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close that. Our next meeting is March eleventh. Clock correct, nobody requested this?
Uh, no, I was, let's see, the deadline for that is probably the twentieth.
February, yeah, it's February twentieth on here.
I've not heard anything. Confirm after the twentieth for you.
Any other business that we need to know about from trustees or anybody else? Joe?
No, I don't have any, the trustees have their hearing for multisound on the twenty-first. That's really the only zoning business going on right now.
What are you in the meeting at?
Second.
Nine thirty-six.
Nine thirty-six, so we have a second, all in favor? I have closed, no, meeting closed, nine thirty-six PM.